Public hearing on school choice pursuant to general law, chapter seventy six, section twelve B, and also school committee policy J F B B. Superintendent Clancy will make a brief presentation and then the hearing will be open to the public. The school committee will vote on school choice later.
Madam Chairman, I hate, I hate to be the stickler once again, but it's a public hearing. You have to move to go into a public hearing at this point.
We hadn't opened the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you already started. I apologize.
Where was I? Okay. Under school choice law, as amended in nineteen ninety-three, all school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate in and to admit non-resident students through school choice. And then a quote from the statute, each city, town, or regional school district shall enroll non-resident students at the school or sector non-resident students' choice, provided, however, that certain receiving districts has seats available. A receiving district can withdraw from school choice only if a school committee holds a public hearing on this issue and then votes to withdraw from the school choice program prior to due first. A timely decision and vote by the school committee to withdraw from school choice is effective only for the following school year. The resolution on which the school committee votes to withdraw from school choice must contain the reasons for the withdrawal. While the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does not review decisions to review, to withdraw from school choice, the school committee must notify the department with vote to withdraw and the reasons for the withdrawal as soon as reasonably possible after the vote. A school committee withdrawing from school choice must continue to serve all non-resident students previously admitted through school choice. So Brooke, do you want to do your presentation?
Sure, and I'll just speak to it. So unless you asked me to put something up on the screen because we've already been through this. And I know that you've had the data for a couple of weeks here. And just a, just a gentle reminder that when I first came into the district, you as a school district, not this particular iteration of the school, this school committee, but the school committee at that time had taken a look at some of the school choice numbers in, and they, at that point in time, had made the decision not to continue allowing school choice students to come into the district. And on the, the page where, in the presentation that you have in your packets from last time, you'll note that school choice, for example, into, into the district in the historical perspective in FY seventeen was at one oh eight and projected here right now for twenty-one is thirty. So you, for the last several years, the school choice decision has been not to allow the students in. And I think at the, the point in time, and Kathy, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong. I think that they felt that perhaps too many school choice students had come in and there was a bit of a, a bit of an imbalance. And so I think the school committee at that time had thought that, you know, given the course of a couple of years, perhaps it could rebalance itself in terms of sheer numbers. So that's what you're sitting at right now is you've got basically thirty school choice students in. And of course, again, if you take a look at the, the historical sheet that you've got in your packets, you see that the students are now basically starting to age out. And so that's why you're sitting, you know, with your last grade grouping there, the grade eight level. So that's where you're sitting right now philosophically. I'm not sure where this particular iteration of the school committee sits, whether it's something you would like to continue to do or whether you are choosing to go down a different pathway. I think that at the time, I think, when I first came to the district, I think for all kinds of good and appropriate reasons, the school committee at that time had decided that they really needed to put the brakes on it. So, you know, Kathy, I'll certainly defer to you for any additional comments, but that's where you sit tonight. So we need to make a decision exactly, Kathy. I'm so glad that you read that regulation because that's exactly right. You need to basically opt out if you're not going to accept them.
Okay, so this period of time is to hear from the public. We do have a vote scheduled for later on the agenda. At that point, we will make a motion relative to school choice and have our discussion and ask questions at that time. So Alita, is there any? Yes, Alita?
Before we go too much further, I think we have to make a motion to open the hearing. Is that correct?
No, 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 we didn't. We were not. I opened the hearing. If we had opened.
I think it has to be by motion.
It does.
The hearing has to be by motion also, Kathy.
All right, I'm gonna let.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I, I don't, I'm sorry, Kathy. I don't, I don't make the rules. I just follow them. Madam Chairman, I'd moved that we open a public hearing on the matter or the issue of a school choice.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, let me vote, go down the vote. Me, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Hi.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Is there, are there any members of the public that want to be heard relative to school choice?
There is none in the waiting room.
Okay, if that is the case, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So movement, Madam Chairman.
Joseph?
Seconded.
Seconded?
Shouldn't, I don't want to be a, I don't want to be a stickler here, but shouldn't we? Am I unmuted? Shouldn't we give it a couple of minutes?
It's six after. The public meeting was at six o'clock. It has been posted. And if there's no one coming in, and we did check before and now. So we have a motion to close the public hearing. We have a second.
Who was that? Who's that? Who's second?
Leah did.
Leah.
Right. So Leah, close the, the meeting, the, the hearing.
Point of order, point of order, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I just, are we reserving all of our questions for the, the school committee meeting? This was just presentation of information.
The public hearing is, we had one on the budget. And at that time, we just heard from the public. And then when we went to talk about the budget during the regular agenda, that's when we ask our questions.
Got it.
There will be an opportunity to discuss and ask questions because it's on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, um, Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Thank you very much. So at this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee at six oh seven. Let the record show also that we convened the, we adjourned the public hearing at six oh six. So now I'm calling the meeting to order actually now at six oh eight. So those who choose, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have one citizen's comment, and this is from Peg Lorenzo, who lives in Stowe. Chairman Codyann, PSC Committee Chair, Dr. Mary McCarthy, and members, with gratitude and respect for all you do, I need to convey that I am appalled, distressed, and grossly disappointed in the determinations you have enacted for the formation of the Superintendent Screening Committee. My opinion is based on viewing your NRSD meeting of March tenth, coverage in the Stowe-Bolton Independent, your letter to parents on the Superintendent Search webpage, recruiting the parent volunteers, and study of the website of your paid consultant MASC. Your process has been insular, provincial, and narrow-minded, assured to gird against any inconvenient input our open tri-town community might deliver. Ironically, on March tenth, Dr. McCarthy strongly emphasized that the school committee is the singular body that ultimately selects the superintendent, but then moved on with Chairman Codyann to advise the committee that the fee consultant MASC had limited and prescribed guidance limiting the size and characteristic for the selection committee. I point out the MASC mission and services never mentions the community at large, the taxpayers, or citizen constituency at all. Please study the very abbreviated two thousand nineteen population data below, which shows the percentage of households in each of the towns with kids and not kids. So Lancaster, thirty-four point five of the households have children, sixty-five point four percentage do not. In Bolton, forty-two percent of households have children in the schools, fifty-eight do not. And in Stowe, thirty-nine percent of households have children in the schools and sixty-one percent do not. Is it too late to rediscuss and possibly revise your actions? So I want to thank Peg for her citizen's comments. Okay, um, at this point, I want to do part one of the school committee chair updates. And so Dorothy Presser is joining us tonight. I sent folks a lot of information, just so you have it, and that information will be made public. But we don't need to discuss any of that, you know, the supporting documentation, unless of course people have questions for Dorothy. But our goal tonight is to approve the job posting brochure. And I did send folks the things, the recommendations from the PSC. So let me turn it over to Dorothy. Hi, Dorothy. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Happy to be here. So at this point, just sort of an update, we had the, we had the focus groups in the survey, which was step one of the search, and that was to gather information from the community, from all the various stakeholders about where the district stood, what they saw as the strengths of the districts, what they, of the district, what they saw as the challenges. And so the focus groups were open to the community. We had a community focus group. We had parent focus groups and several focus groups for the staff and the educators in the district. We also had the online survey that was out for, I think, about three weeks, if I remember, because I was asked to extend it a week with a great response of three hundred and forty-six respondents, which was actually a few more than when you did this last time. And focus groups, when we have an online survey, tend not to be as heavily attended as they used to be before we had the online survey. So there were a total of twenty-nine people that attended the various focus groups. And as we often find, the information from the focus groups and the information from the surveys supported each other. They weren't vastly different, but helped us sort of coalesce around what people saw as the strengths, the future challenges in the district. And that led to, you know, what kind of a leader would be successful here and would lead the, the district to more success. People were very clear that they felt that the staff at, at Neshoba was a strength of the district, that the teachers are really there to support the students. They believe and want to support their success. The parents are supportive of the schools. The community as a whole is supportive of the schools, not only from a financial viewpoint, but really, you know, as one person put it, everyone comes from a place of caring about kids. It's a community that really cares about its students and wants its students to be successful. They see that there are some challenges in place, but see the, a lot of potential. If though, you know, it's, it's a good, solid school system now with good, you know, good academic results, great kids coming out of the system, a lot of courses and extracurricular activities to support that, to make it a really solid, good district, but could become, could grow. Could we always look for that continuous improvement? So some of the challenges that they saw were a better chance for communication with all the stakeholders in the different community and a chance to build, build culture and, and build some trust. On the high school project, the sort of the, the high school project that's starting to be in the offing has an opportunity to provide great things for the students in the district. And it's a sort of a, a challenge, but sort of a positive, forward-looking challenge that people see. So in terms of the next educational leader, people are looking for someone that has that good, strong administrative background. Don't see it as a, see it as a place where the challenges mean that coming in with that strong administrative background already would be important to enable someone to meet those challenges. So enable, you know, it's someone who can really meet that communication standpoint, be not only someone who can get the story out about the district, but listen and use that listening and that back and forth in making good decisions about the district. And, and the ability to develop and, and enhance a strong administrative team is something that people see as important. And to be able to really articulate a vision for driving the district forward and being able to work collaboratively on any solutions that need to be in place. So we take that information and we suggest some selection criteria. I think one of the other things that you saw in your packet was a draft of the brochure that will be the posting or the advertising for the position. And in that, we have not only the qualifications that people should meet as a base, but pick a, a limited number of, what are the, what are the selection criteria? What are the important things that we're going to be looking for? I shouldn't say we, because it's really you. What are you going to be looking for? As, as the preliminary screening committee meets and is looking at the candidates and as you are vetting the candidates, once you have some finalists, what are those really important attributes, skills, background, and so forth that we're going to be looking for? We always suggest that you don't let the list get too lengthy so that you sort of dilute the list by having too much in it, which is why there are only at this point five different attributes that we've put in that suggested selection criteria. So your challenge this evening, or the task before you this evening, is to look at those suggested selection criteria and comment on them, approve them if you wish, and we go forward from there. So the plan from here is that hopefully by Monday, we can have that brochure completed and ready to post and, and go out with the advertising.
So the way we're going to proceed with this, I will see if anyone has any questions for Dorothy. And then we will make a motion relative to accepting the PSC's recommendation. And after we have a second, then we can ask questions and discuss. I will pull up the, the, the document I sent to you about the additions to the brochure. But right now, if you have a question for Dorothy, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Elaine?
Thanks. Thank you, Dorothy. I know that a lot of work went into everything that's just happened so far. I noticed on the survey that over eighty-one percent of the respondents were parents. And so obviously, the responses then are going to be heavily weighted towards the parent perspective. How were you able to balance that volume with the other stakeholders in the district who maybe you had less opportunity to get their feedback?
So I, you know, I sort of look at what, sort of break out, what did I see coming from the different groups? And it was very consistent. One of the, you know, one of the focus groups that we had was with administrators, and the things that they were talking about were reflective of the things that were, were talked about in the focus groups and reflective of the comments in the survey as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Dorothy? I'm not seeing any hands, so if there are no objections. And Dorothy, if you could stay with us for this part of the discussion about the, the additions to the brochure. So Alita, I'm gonna want to share the screen. So let me start. I'm gonna start with the brochure itself.
So Kathy, I did, I do just want to let everyone know that I, I have a hard stop at about five of seven.
Yes, no, no.
Because I have something else to be at seven, so.
Yeah, no, no.
I've been traveling halfway across the state.
Yeah, no, um, I, folks were, I let folks, I made folks aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
This is the draft of the, the brochure that Dorothy has presented. And so you'll see some things. There are some qualifications here that are just placeholders for now. We'll look at the other document and see. A lot of it is just information about the application process and the, the district. And then here's where we would put the, the, the selection criteria. So let me call up the other document. Yeah, here we go. All right, so now, um, screen share. Okay, um, Alita, I got a message that said I needed to get permission to record or something. Alita?
I heard you. I don't know anything about that. You're not trying to record?
Nope, I'm not.
Don't worry about it. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know why Zoom sent that.
All right, I'm trying to get back. All right, let me go to this. All right, there's everybody. And then I wanted to screen share, let me see.
We can see your screen.
Okay, can you see this, the, the additions to the brochure?
We see a Word document in your.
Yeah, okay. It says the additions to the brochure. I can make it bigger. So these are the things for your consideration. The PSC met on Monday. Mary, do you want to go through this with folks?
Well, I can say that we, we met on Monday, the twenty-second, and Dorothy Presser was, was with us. And so we have such a terrific mission statement that just says so succinctly so much about Neshoba Regional School District that we'd like to add the mission statement before the community profile and just so that it is on the brochure, because it's, it just speaks to who we are as Neshoba. And these are the suggested selection criteria. And, and you know, I can read them, but you can also read them. I think you, you will hear that they echo, they, they reinforce what Dorothy said, that she has, the community has told us through the survey as well as through the focus groups, beginning with, you know, the, the ability promoting and supporting students pre-K to twelve learning experience that combine a balance of academic, social, emotional skill development and experience and assessment methods designed to measure growth in these areas, excellent communication interpersonal skills, including evidence and creating a culture of trust and respect, collaborative leadership style with the ability to develop and lead a successful administrative team, expertise in developing, implementing, and overseeing a long-term district vision and strategy, track record of valuing and promoting diversity, equity, inclusion in student, staff, and community, and knowledge and experience in school, budget, and fiscal development, implementation, and oversight, and then communication of budget issues to the public. So we'll, we'll be talking about that and getting feedback from the whole committee on that. That, these are our recommendations that have also come, you know, through the discussion with Dorothy. And finally, the qualifications, and that is, that is what is, you know, that is very standard. However, the salary and contract, what we, rather than a number, although we did talk about a range, but rather than a number, it makes more sense to say salary can measure it with experience, three-year contract, which is, that's typical, fringe benefits negotiable, which is also very typical. So if there.
So what I think I'd like to do is make, ask Elaine to make the motion, get a second, and then we can discuss.
Sure. I move to accept the Personnel Subcommittee's recommendations for the Superintendent Job Posting and Brochure to include the mission statement before the community profile and language for selection criteria, qualifications, and salary and contract.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All sec.
Sharon seconded. Okay, um, questions, discussion? So I'll call on you if I see your hands, comments, questions. Amy?
Thank you. I, I thought that everything that you pulled together looked like a lot of work, and I wanted to thank you for all of your work pulling it together. It looks nice. I, I just have a few comments for consideration regarding the selection criteria. I wondered if we needed to emphasize more that with the last, I'll start with the last bullet and move up. Knowledge and experience in school budget, I'd like to suggest inserting the word regional school budget. Because it, I, you know, in my short term on the school committee, it seems like that's a different beast than traditional school that might just be dealing with one town. And it might require a special skill set. And the other thing that I thought we might want to add to the selection criteria, depending on the will of the committee, is something that mentions the fact that we are in the middle of an MSBA eligibility period and that we've started that process, and the superintendent will be, you know, responsible for seeing it through. So I thought with the bullet that starts with the collaborative leadership style, with the ability to develop and lead a successful administration, administrative team, that we could add and work with leaders of three-member towns to oversee an MSBA, the implementation of the MSBA project or something to that effect.
Okay, I'm gonna let, this actually came up, some of the, the specific things you mentioned, Amy, when we had a discussion with Dorothy on Monday. Dorothy, do you want to, so Amy's suggestion is that we should include that the person have experience with a regional budget.
So, so I, listening to Amy's comments, I would, I would say if you, if you want that in, I would put something in, experience with a regional budget preferred. An experienced superintendent from a municipal district could very well quickly develop the skill set to, to work with a regional budget. So I wouldn't necessarily try to, or I wouldn't necessarily do something that might discourage someone who doesn't have that. who doesn't have that experience but could develop the skill set. So you might wanna put something in preferred. And I would also say that if you want something in about MSBA, sometimes there are bullets about building projects or working with MSBA. I would do that as a separate bullet and not try to add it to a bullet that already exists.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
We did, we did talk about this, Amy, with Dorothy. And in terms of regional, I like what Dorothy said about that it would be great if that were the case. But it's not so much a different skill set that a superintendent would need to have. It's, it's knowledge of regional school finance. And so someone who is a superintendent in a single district has a skill set. Let's hope that they do, especially if they're applying to us, to be able to understand the whole budget process. There are specific laws as well as an understanding of when you have a regional school district, you have different towns and each town has a unique character. And so that's part of it, but that's not necessarily a different skill set. And so we wouldn't want to necessarily deter anyone who was a superintendent or assistant superintendent, let's say, in a single school district from being able to apply here.
I understand that. That's, that's a good point. But I like Dorothy's suggestion of the word preferred, but, you know, and I'm bringing him up for consideration, but by all means, whatever the committee feels is appropriate is fine with me.
Um, the issue regarding experience with the MSBA. Thoughts on how to handle that? I think Mary mentioned, or somebody mentioned that it should be perhaps a separate bullet?
That was Dorothy.
Yeah.
Any suggested wording, Dorothy?
It could be, I'm just like fleshing it out on the top of my head, something like experience with MSBA projects. Might wanna.
Just put desirable on the end, experience with.
Sure, that, yep.
MSBA projects desirable?
Yep, yep.
Not, not preferred, but, you know.
Yeah, desire, yep.
Okay. Other questions or comments about the selection criteria qualifications? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike?
Yep, thank you. This is a question for Dorothy. Mary, it sounded as if language was decided about salary and contract. And I guess my question, you know, as we're talking about language that might dissuade people, is it, is it common to be sort of ambiguous about salary? In other words, do we run the risk of maybe going into a finalist and maybe making an offer and then having our number and their expectation be so vastly different that they back out and we're sort of left holding the bag? Is there any risk there?
Um, I, it's not uncommon to advertise, to not advertise a number. I think, you know, it happens both ways. Some people advertise a range, some people advertise commensurate with experience. The, there's two things going on. The salaries of superintendents are public knowledge. So everyone's gonna know what they might be going into. They'll be very aware of that. And I think that, that the Personnel Subcommittee was aware of that as well. And of course, everyone thinks they're worth the top of the range, right? So, so I think that if you say commensurate with experience, you give yourselves a little more flexibility. There's also, you know, there's also, you know, benefits are negotiable. So there's two ways you can, you have to consider that, consider that when you're talking, when you're doing the negotiation. The other thing that we always say, when you make the motion to appoint the superintendent, the words contingent upon negotiation of a contract that is acceptable to both parties. I don't have the exact word, but we always wanna make sure that when you appoint someone, you do it contingent on that negotiation being successful. So you don't kind of get stuck with, with needing to get to something that you're not comfortable with. Does that make sense?
It does. And your point about, you know, the superintendent's salary being public record, I guess my question was, is there a frame of reference? But I suppose that's exactly the frame of reference that a prospective candidate would need. So thank you.
So Mary, did you wanna say something?
No, no, but Mike had said, yeah, no, Mike had said Dorothy and he said Mary. And I don't know, you don't know this, but my name is Mary Dorothy. So I, so I just wanna say that. And Leah has her hand up.
Um, I, can I just jump, piggyback on what Mike's saying? One of the things that'll come up later in the meeting is that, and we actually did this for the high school principal. The school committee has to approve a salary range for this position. And we will do that at the April seventh meeting. So there will be a range and Andrea's done a lot of work and will explain how the range was determined. So that's, that's to come. So let me add this. All right, who else had her hand up?
Leah.
Kathy, Leah.
Yep, go ahead, Leah.
The second to last bullet, this is perhaps semantics, but it says a track record of valuing and promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in students, staff, and community. I'm not totally sure what that means.
Do you want it to say with?
I don't know.
Mary?
I know, I'm looking at it too. Maybe Elaine can help us too.
For? I don't know what the preposition should be.
Well, not, not, you don't do it for, but with.
I mean, yeah, we'd go, you would go with like within the student body, staff, and community, maybe.
What about that?
Among?
Within?
Track record of valuing.
The student body, staff, and community.
And inclusion. Would it be with? Do we want with?
Elaine, what did you say, within the student body, staff, and community?
Yeah, either within, which you'd change student to student body, or among might be a word.
Yeah, about among.
I feel like if you were to say something like a track record of valuing and promoting an environment where, do you know what I mean? Like, if we could just get back to, what are you trying to say right here? What is this bullet trying to accomplish? You're trying to tell prospective candidates that we want them to.
You want, you want it to, to have prospective candidates to know that you're looking for evidence that they have done work in, that they value it and that they've done work in promoting diversity, equity, inclusion. I think among is probably the right word. Whoever said among, I think that probably hits it. Among the students, among the staff, and, and with the community.
So Leah also said a track record of valuing and promoting an environment of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then among students, staff, and community. Does that work?
Yeah, I think that's why I said for, like, this leader is responsible for creating the environment.
Yep.
Where these things are demonstrably valued, valued. So I don't know, I'm just, I just want them to understand what we mean, that they, we want them to create an environment
Yep.
for all the members of our community, students, staff, parents, town leaders, everyone.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I was just gonna ask you really quick, Kathy, is because the materials that are going out to the prospective candidates identify the timeline, is it, I'm just worried that the time crunch, that we are spending so much time on the front end of this and that from the moment that we are given finalists to the moment we hire that person is, I think, three days. And so considering the length of the timeline, in my opinion, I think that that portion is some of the most important work. Because.
That, if there's a typo somewhere, if it says three days, because it's not.
So it says that, I have on the roadmap that we are given school committee interviews finalists starting on the twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth.
What does the timeline say?
I think this is the timeline.
No, the roadmap, the timeline is, so there were the semi, the screening committee picks semifinalists. And I think at that other end, at the, at the end of it, we can adjust if need be for the three, if there are three finalists and they're brought to the committee on May twenty-fourth. I don't have the timeline in.
I, on the timeline, it says the finalists are announced the week of May eighteenth. The week of May twenty-fourth is site visits. And May twenty-seventh is the selection of the new superintendent. So our thought was that in order to, and the timeline can change, and even if it's published, the timeline can change. But our thought was, once you, once you announce the finalists, then what happens is site visits are arranged and interviews are arranged. Very often, there'll be a period of site visits where the school committee is going to the candidate's district. Then there's a period where the candidates are coming to the school committee district, the school to Neshoba. And that, that doesn't, that, that, there can be overlap there. There can be one candidate, you can be visiting one candidate while another candidate is visiting Neshoba, because you are not really involved with the visits. The school committee is not involved with the visits to Neshoba. So that was a way to tighten the timeline a little bit. But that, that, I mean, that's up to you. That it's, it, it is tight, but it usually is sort of a race to the finish once you get to that point. But.
So I just, I know that for the, as soon as the finalists are announced, that we need to do public forums and such, right, which is not yet on the timeline?
That, those will be part of the site visits. So each candidate would have the opportunity to do, whether, what, how, however it happens in this environment, they would have an opportunity to spend some time in Neshoba. Each candidate would have the opportunity for, in that visit, some sort of a community meet and greet. And that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, it just seems tight to me. It also strikes me that we might have different members on our committee at that moment in time. And I just don't want anything to go awry in what I perceive as the most important stage.
Sounds like you can expand the end. I mean, it's on or around. And so as you need to, I think the important thing is, is to get to the point where you have finalists and then adjust the next week or so based on that. But it does move very quickly once you have finalists, it seems.
Yeah, and I just, you know, and I do remember last time that, that the committee did decide, once they had the finalists, to take a different approach. To, I think, if I remember right, you had five finalists and decided to have interview, Brooke probably remembers this, to have interviews first and, and whittle the number down a little bit and then went ahead and did site visits and more work and another interview to get to the point. So there's nothing, there's nothing carved in stone. If the committee gets to that point and feels that more time is necessary, that can certainly happen.
So I'm sorry, Kathy, to keep jumping in, but is there something that would prevent candidates? Like, I know that most contracts reset on June first. And so do we run the risk of candidates getting tied up in their other district's contract?
So most.
It's July first, isn't it?
July first, yes. And, and, and most, most contracts have a notice. And that, you know, we've talked about this from the very beginning, which is why July first or as soon as possible thereafter is the start date, knowing that someone may have to give notice and, and not be able to start on July first, but start shortly thereafter.
Got it.
Okay. You good, Leah?
Yeah, so offering it as soon as possible because of that requirement to notify is important. But knowing that we have some buffer in June makes me feel a little better. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments on the Joseph?
Thank you, ma'am chairman. I actually have a question and a comment. I'll start with my comment. I just wanna compliment the Personnel Subcommittee, you and Dr. McCarthy. I think the suggested selection criteria is just outstanding. I did have a question from Ms. Presser, though. And I'm just curious if Ms. Presser thinks there's anything further we should be adding to this from the MASC's perspective.
From the MA, no, no, you know, I look fairly carefully at the, at the survey and the focus groups. And my, you know, my, from, from, from sort of the search consultant standpoint, I would rather keep the list tighter. I mean, there's certain other expectations that you know are gonna go with the job. But these are the things that you wanna look at and say, we wanna make sure that we have an emphasis in this area, in these areas, at the people that we're looking at. You know, that strong leadership, the strong ability to lead that leadership team, that, you know, the promoting equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I think the Subcommittee has done really a great job in, in zeroing in on the things that are important for you to be looking at in Neshoba right now and into the future, without the list getting too long and watered down.
And just to.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead and then.
Just, I just wanna follow up and, and say thank you to Joe, but I don't wanna take credit where Dorothy had crafted some of this too, from what the survey and the focus groups. And then we worked, we worked on it. But I just wanna make sure that we give Dorothy credit for this too, because she was a, what, the work that she had done of culling what she had seen and analyzing that is, is very apparent here too.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, a question for Dorothy that kind of piggybacks on the point that Leah was making about our timeline. I'm on the MS, MASC's website, looking at the current superintendent posts, like positions that are open, that are all starting on July first. And it looks like our deadline for submitting applications is April.
Thirty.
April thirtieth. I was wondering if there's any reason for making it, for giving that much time for getting applications in, because that is the latest deadline that I can see of all of the positions that are posted. And I don't know if that, how that compare, how a candidate would view that. Or if that puts us at a disadvantage, because other people are applying to other positions first.
So the, I mean, the, it's, it's when you started the search that is sort of dictating where your timeline or where the application period ends. Generally, we allow about a month. We used to allow longer, but it, we didn't get any fewer applications by shortening that timeline a little bit. Off, you know, less than a month, particularly with, I mean, you could try less than a month, but I would be afraid that people wouldn't feel like they could get their applications in. You know, together, do their research about Neshoba and put together their application materials and so forth in much less than a month. We find that there, I, I think, and I even think this year is a little bit of an anomaly compared to other years. Because I think, you know, we used to think, we'll get out there in the fall, right? If you know you're gonna have a search, get out there in the fall. That's when the pool is the strongest and everyone will get picked off as you go along. We don't find that to be the case at all. We find strong candidates in the pool, no matter when there are, when the search happens. And I think this year is even a little bit more of an anomaly, because I think people who, earlier this year, may not have wanted to say, I'm leaving my district in the middle of the pandemic. I, you know, I kinda, I, to, to start looking now seems wrong. That now people are seeding a little bit, that the light at the end of the tunnel of returning to whatever the new normal is, are more willing to say, yeah, maybe, I've been thinking about this, maybe it is time to start to put my, my name out there in searches.
If we bumped it up by a week, does that buy us a week on the backend or is it kind of?
It could buy you a week on the backend, if you, but you would, you would be allowing people only three weeks from the time you start advertising to get their applications in.
Well, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Sharon?
Not sure that this fits in with the selected, or how it fits in with the selection criteria or the qualifications. But I just wanna throw this out there as a thought, and that is. And that is, I'm wondering if, um, somewhere in there, we could put in something, some kind of a statement that talks about a commitment to being a lifelong learner or, um, someone that's eager to grow or eager to learn with the community or with the district. I guess I'm thinking in the same way that the, um, above this, the mission statement sets Neshoba apart. That that idea of lifelong learning and that commitment to growing, I think is also a strong statement about who we are. So I'm just wondering if there, if there's any interest or any, um, way to put that kind of a statement in there somewhere.
Dorothy, do you want to speak to that?
Well, you know, that's, that's an interesting thought. And I think what I would say to that is putting, I, I, you know, putting the mission statement in the brochure is, I think, a great idea. Um, and when you're looking for a superintendent, you're looking for that match, right? You're looking for someone whose sort of core values match your core values. And maybe not putting it in the brochure, but thinking about, you know, when we are interviewing and asking questions, that might be a great, um, a great question, you know, something along that line might be a great question to include. And, um, and see how they respond to that question.
Okay, Sharon? Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Dorothy? I want to be very, um, aware of her time. Okay, so this is what I'd like to do. And because we are, um, ritual. So I'm, um, with regard to the recommendations before we vote, one of the recommendations was to add the mission statement before the community profile. So I'm just going to go through our list and tell me yes or no. Add the mission statement before the community profile. I say yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, I think the other quote unquote easy one is relative to salary and contract. So salary commensurate with experience, three-year contract fringe benefits negotiable. Yes or no? Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Okay, now there were some suggestions for changing, uh, the fourth bullet. No, no.
Five.
Bullet and the sixth bullet and adding a seventh bullet. So I'm going to start with the fifth bullet, which reads right now, track record of valuing and promoting diversity, equity, inclusion in students, staff and community. A recommendation or suggestion to change it to a track record of valuing and promoting an environment of diversity, equity, inclusion among students, staff and community. And I'm just doing this quick, yes or no? I say yes to the change. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay. The next bullet, knowledge and experience in school budget and fiscal development, implementation and oversight and in communication of budget issues to public. Experience with regional school finance preferred. So we are voting on, uh, adding the last bit, experience with regional school finance preferred. Leah?
Just a quick point of order. Didn't we say desirable?
No, no, that was for MSBA experience.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I am for this.
Okay. Elaine?
No, actually, I think we should cast a wide net and I don't want to deter people.
Okay, uh, Steve?
No.
Sharon?
No.
Mary?
No.
Mike?
I apologize. Can you, could you just tell me which bullet what this is?
Certainly. Mike, it's the, it's the one, knowledge and experience in school budget and fiscal development, implementation and oversight in communication of budget issues to the public. The, we're voting whether or not to add experience with regional school finance preferred.
Yes.
Okay, Joseph?
No.
Rich?
Uh, yes.
Brett?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
And me, no. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no. And four, yes, so we do not add that. We strike that last piece and keep it as original. All right, um, recommendation to add the bullet, experience with MSBA projects desirable. Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Me, yes. Amy?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes, desirable.
Okay. Um, and so, in, given the, um, the changes that we have made, could we redo the motion, Elaine, based on the, um, changes that we've made to the recommendations?
Madam Chair, may I just interrupt and ask to excuse myself at this point?
Oh, by all means.
Dash across the state.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dorothy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Dorothy.
Bye. So the motion was to.
Um, so can I just say as amended?
Yes.
Not really an amendment.
No, yeah, right. It's as edited or, Joseph, what do we say?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with the, the Vice Chair. Just, uh, the, the motion, reiterate the motion, uh, as amended.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I move to accept the Personnel Subcommittee's recommendations for the Superintendent Job Posting Brochure to include the mission statement before the community profile and language for the selection criteria, qualifications and salary and contract as amended.
Who seconded before? My question, no.
Sharon did.
Oh, Sharon, okay, so we get Sharon. All right, so, uh, ready to vote? Yes, Mike?
Sorry, um, uh, let's see, one, two, three, fourth bullet down. Can we de- hyphenate overseeing and make it one word overseeing? I don't think overseeing has to be hyphenated.
Well, I'm going to check with Mary McCarthy.
Wait, some of it's stylistic. You know, we say, I think you can do either way. So let's, if you take it out, see if, um, grammar check goes.
All right, so Mike, we'll take a look at that.
We'll make sure it's right.
We'll make sure it's correct. Mary will.
I will.
I just do whatever Mary tells me to do. That's how I get by. Okay, so, um, are we ready to vote on the brochure? So, let's see, Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
And Joseph?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, that's for the brochure. Thank you very much. We will give the edits to Dorothy and she will add them to the template that you saw. I also asked Dorothy to add the gold, um, logo that we have on the, the brochure. So we'll have the N on one side and the seal on the other. Okay, thank you very much. Let's see where we're at now. Okay, we are. Okay, I'm going to turn the agenda over to Brooke. For unfinished, no, new business. Brooke?
She's on her way back in. She stepped out for this point, so we've let her know to come on back in.
Oh, all right, sorry.
But I think we're gonna, um, are we gonna talk about foreign travel right now?
Right now, the first thing is student foreign travel.
Yeah.
School year twenty-one, twenty-two.
So I can actually, I can actually take that. That's going to be, uh,
Thank you.
For me to take anyway. So, um, I've got Greg Denson and Lauren Bullard from the high school who are joining us this evening.
Yeah.
And if you recall, they joined us at the end of last year. And, um, when we were taking a look at all of the trips that Neshoba Regional School District had, um, in the works for last school year.
Yeah.
And if you'll recall, we had an Italy trip that was supposed to go.
Yeah.
In the, um, early spring and then obviously COVID hit and those trips, um, we needed to cancel. And then we were working with a variety of travel companies, most importantly, uh, and predominantly education first, EF Education, which is out of Boston. Um, and we worked with a variety of school districts to make sure that families, um, got back the money that they had put into those trips if they couldn't travel, um, or had alternatives to travel. And then if you recall, we met over the summer because I felt it important that we had potentially some trips, being planned and in the works for this current year. And kind of reading the tea leaves around the pandemic, we met to determine whether or not we would even entertain travel for this current school year. And this school committee voted to cancel any travel through the school year, which we did. But we kept on the docket, the Thailand trip that was supposed to go this coming summer of twenty twenty-one. So, given where we are now in March of twenty twenty-one and given that, um, we're still unable to travel internationally, students obviously are not able to be vaccinated under the age of sixteen. That trip obviously is not going to be going this summer, given that it is an international trip, um, to Thailand. And so, um, well, I wanted to bring Lauren, um, and Greg forward tonight because I want to start thinking about, in this school committee, to just start thinking about what travel might look like next year. And while we're not looking for any sort of motion, vote or action from the committee, we do kind of want to put on the table that those traveling on this Thailand trip, we certainly want to make sure that there are some alternatives that they could travel potentially next year. And so, um, we always know that we don't bring a trip to you until it's been approved, uh, to start looking into some options. So we're trying to just get a flavor from the committee in terms of looking at travel for next year, given that vaccines are now out, um, travel restrictions advisories are beginning to ease up a little bit. And we're wondering what the feel of the committee is for Greg and Lauren and any others at the high school to begin maybe looking at some possibilities for next year, given the February and or April break. And if so, we would then bring some options to you for approval.
So just to be clear, when you talk about this year, you're talking about school year twenty-one, twenty-two?
This current, um, when I talk about this year, I'm talking about this current school year of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We canceled all trips for this current school year, but we kept the Thailand trip because it was running in the summertime outside of the school year. But now, given that we're in March, that trip is not going to go, given that it is international and there are still travel restrictions.
Right.
With that, we need to cancel that trip, but we also now want to look ahead to next year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, at some potential options for student travel.
Okay, so you want to just, you want to hear what the school committee thinks about that?
Yeah, it's so, in other words, I, I'm not thinking that the school committee is going to nix travel for next year, given that we're now moving into, you know, different stages and that, you know, what we're hearing is that school districts are looking for travel opportunities for next year. And we're just looking for, you know, for you folks to say, yes, by all means, look at what potential options are out there for next year. And then please bring them forward to us once we can do a little bit of research. So we don't want to go advertising trips without keeping you folks in the loop. But we also want to let you know that the Thailand trip is canceled. We kept it on the docket. But given where travel is right now, we have to cancel that trip.
But just by way of our policy, Todd, uh, trips should not be booked unless they're approved by the school committee.
Correct. And so, that, that's why we, we were not doing any sort of booking of travel. That's why we're bringing this up to you folks tonight and also letting you know that the Thailand trip that did come before the school committee last year is now canceled due to travel restrictions. So there's no trips on the docket, but we certainly want to either be able to look into options for next year. Or not, but we need your direction in whether to do that or not.
Okay, so let me see who on the committee wants to speak to this. Raise your hand and I will.
Greg and Lauren are here to answer any questions that may come, come up.
Yeah, thanks. Greg and Lauren, good to see you. Okay, who would like to comment on this? So I've got Mary. Who else? Joseph? Who else? All right, so right now, all I see is Mary and Joseph, so we'll start there. Um, Mary?
So, as someone who, uh, is a proponent of global education, uh, that's my dissertation. And one of the best ways for students to be able to, um, develop a global perspective is to travel. And there's nothing like it. So to say that I'm a proponent is to understate how much I'm in favor. The current climate is just still so unstable. And, and whereas, um, to be able to say, well, start looking. I, I don't want us to get into the situation that we were in before where once there was any talk of anything and there were deposits or any talk, then we have students' expectations raised. We have parents who talk about that their, their children have had jobs and they've saved the money and we're disappointing them. Uh, the pandemic is, has disappointed all of us and taken countless lives. And, um, and right now, what we're seeing, uh, in other countries, the, the variants and the surges that are happening. You know, I don't think that anybody, um, even, even, uh, Dr. Fauci doesn't, you know, we don't know exactly what it's going to be like next year. So I'm, I'm really leery of, of, of saying to go ahead and, and even look because safety is, is paramount to me. And it, it breaks my heart to think of, of how many opportunities certain classes, certain students have been deprived of. But that, the way I feel is that I, I don't want to, I mean, like, I don't want to say yes yet. That's just the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Mary. Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, Dr. McGuire is asking the committee to look forward. I'd actually like to take a moment to look back a little bit and maybe inquire of, uh, Dr. McGuire as to, um, what exactly transpired? And if you, if you reported this out to us before, forgive me if I've lost my mind and don't remember this. But I remember there was an issue with regards to deposits that were put down. And there was some pushback from some of the travel companies regarding reimbursements and what have you. And I kind of thought to myself, well, you know, if you didn't have insurance, it's kind of on you. But I guess my question is looking forward in this regard. First of all, how, how, what type of successes you have in getting people's money back for those trips that were canceled? And looking forward, what are you suggesting as far as, you know, is it going to be any requirement for students to, or their parents to take out insurance, travel insurance, to avoid any necessity of the district getting involved in negotiating settlements between the travel company and the students and their parents?
Thanks for the question, uh, Joe. It's a great question. So several school districts worked together, um, to really give tremendous pushback to those companies. And they were required, um, to reimburse families who had put money into, uh, insurance or not, um, to get reimbursed. And I believe most families were reimbursed upwards to ninety percent. And I believe most families were reimbursed upwards to ninety percent of, um, the money that they had put into trips or offered, um, alternatives. Um, so it was settled, um, but I know that it went up to the state, the state level, um, with that. So, and the reason why we just were, we're trying to get a feel from you folks in terms of looking forward is that obviously, when you do offer a trip, you know, you wanna give families as much time to be able to obviously be able to pay it over, you know, a year's worth of months, et cetera. And so we're just looking ahead, like, we obviously wouldn't announce a trip in, 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 in November that could potentially go in February or April because it wouldn't give families a lot of time, um, to get on a payment plan. So this is just that, you know, the beginning of that discussion so that we can start reaching out to companies like EF to ask those questions, um, that you're asking right now.
So, Seth, Joe?
Yeah, just, just, just a, just a quick follow-up and I apologize. So, I, I guess I'm just looking at the, the, the brass tacks of the whole situation. You know, is there going to be a recommendation moving forward that if a child in this district is going to look to take some sort of travel, be it in the country or et cetera, that insurance is gonna be required? Or is that something that's gonna just be left to the discretion of the parents?
It's always left at the discretion of the parents, but we always recommend insurance and, and not just because of, oh, pandemic, but God, God forbid if somebody is sick, you know, very, you know, we, so we always recommend it. I know EF always recommends parents to purchase the insurance, but it certainly is left up to the individual family.
Steve had his hand up.
Yes, uh, what we're talking about right now is really the, the beginning part or the first half of twenty twenty-two. Is that correct, Todd?
That would be correct. We'd probably be looking at, you know, inquiring in terms of what kind of trips could we run in the spring of twenty twenty-two, if, if any at all.
Okay, so when, we're not actually committing to any company, number one.
Nope.
And, and in, in reality, we're asking, uh, these, uh, two people, Mr. Denson and Ms. Bullard, to explore what might be available without making any kind of commitments to the companies, number one, and without publicizing this to the school community, number two. Is that correct? Would, and they'll come back to us and say, this is what we found, this is what's possible, this is what may be not possible. And the school committee at that point in time, depending upon the recommendations of the CDC and other, um, organizations, will, uh, will kind of say, okay, go ahead, you can start, or no, we really don't think we should do anything that, that, that particular semester.
Correct, you're absolutely correct. And if Greg or Lauren wanna chime in with anything too, because I know that they're more in the, the trenches with the companies right now, obviously, given that the Thailand trip is not running, um, please feel free to offer anything, Greg or Lauren. Um, but like I said, we certainly are just wanting to be as transparent with this committee, given that travel obviously has been a very difficult thing over the last year. And also, we're trying to just be so cautious about that, you know, travelers like last year don't, don't get into the same pickle um, that they ran into, you know, last year with having put so much money and then the trip's not running, et cetera. So we wanna make sure that we do this, um, the best possible way that we can with as much open communication as we can.
So basically, you're right, you're asking the filling of the committee to do some exploratory work and nothing beyond exploratory work at this point in time.
Right now, yeah, we wouldn't, we would not advertise a trip without the permission of this school committee to say, by all means, we support that. Which is why, which is why we're here.
Greg, did you wanna make a comment?
I was just gonna try to respond a little bit on, on the companies. There are a number of companies that have, they've been reaching out to us all year. They've been waiting for us to, to, to wanna talk to them. Um, we worked with EF last year and the district has worked with them in the past. And so that's part of why we're having conversation now is because with the Thailand trip canceled, a lot of the families chose to take a waiver, so, or a voucher, so that they can then apply it to another trip. And so we have a number of, of Nishoba families sitting on these vouchers, uh, that they'd like to be able to use. Um, so we certainly would look at what EF has. Uh, we continue looking at their policies. All of the companies are, are changing their insurance policies. They're adding different features there. Some of them have been trying to tell us about their, their no-risk, uh, insurance or their, um, canceled for any reason. And we, we wanna be able to take a serious look at it and make comparisons so that we can come back and say, yeah, this is, we think this is, what this company's offering is, is good. And then if there is a problem, we think we'll be okay. Um, or be realistic and say, you know, we weren't happy with what this company's offering. I, one company, they were telling, they say, hey, it's a one hundred percent refund if you decide to cancel by April fifteenth. Well, that doesn't do us any good. I'm not gonna, we're not gonna sign up with something that's just not reasonable. Uh, and so that's really where we are is letting us look and try to figure out what we can do. Cause we know, like Dr. McCarthy said, how valuable this is and that we wanna go back to it when we can.
Okay, thank you. Rich, do you have a question?
Would you like a motion?
Um, I just wanna make, I wanna see if anyone else has a comment or a question for, uh, Dr. McGuire or, uh, Lauren or Greg. Anyone else? Leah?
Just very quickly, I know that you're muted. Sorry, weird, my computer's being weird. Um, I know that international travel is off the agenda right now, but, um, are we looking at domestic travel? I know you guys have done that before.
I mean, we haven't looked at any specific trips. Uh, when we were last, last looking at domestic travel, we really didn't get any kids signing up. So I don't know if that was the particular trip that was offered. Cause they, what, there weren't even enough kids to actually run the trip when, when things got shut down. Um, there are amazing things in this country, uh, you know, and amazing trips could happen, but, um, we haven't started really looking at them yet.
So do you think that, that, that that will be part of what you do considering the restrictions and the worry?
I think it's, it certainly could be. And if the school committee said, hey, make sure you offer so, at least one domestic trip, we would wanna look at that. It last, last year it was a service trip and was, maybe that was what wasn't interesting. Um, maybe it was the timing, maybe it was competing with the international trips. I can't say. It's hard to, it's easy to find out why kids signed up for a trip. It's hard to find out why they didn't sign up for the other ones.
Right.
Um, I just, what I'm thinking about is I'm listening, I, I think, um, perhaps policy subcommittee ought to look at our policy regarding international travel or out-of-state travel and also the protocol that goes with it. Um, and see if there's any, uh, changes that need to be ma, be made. I'm, I'm very leery of, of getting any sense that there is a possibility out there. Not that I don't hope that there would be a possibility, but we've been in a situation before where, uh, people go ahead and make plans or information gets out and kids feel like they've been promised something and then we have to pull back or not allow it. I, I do see Steve's point. There's nothing wrong with exploring what might be available and coming back with that information. But it's gonna be very clear to students that there is nothing planned, nothing promised. And just when, you know, you just look at what's happening now, the, the numbers go down, people are getting vaccinated. Well, it's party time and the numbers are going back up. You know, we thought we'd be able to trust this a little bit better and it seems like history's repeating itself. So that's just the trend that I'm seeing. So, um, um, I think that, um, just to be very careful, getting information, there's nothing wrong with getting information and presenting information. But if this takes on a life of its own and kids feel that there is something, um, coming, um, that, that concerns me. Amy?
Yeah, I just had a question for Mr. Denson or Ms. Bullard about whether they have a sense for how many families have waivers that they need to use? Or, or if that's the, how many people have waivers? Because if that's how they, it's different than getting a refund. I mean, they're, they're looking to use those because they've already, they didn't get their money back.
Right.
You know?
Uh, I, it took a little while to get a response from EF. The last thing they told me was the, the non-Thailand families, there were twenty-something people that were still holding on to those, those vouchers. And I believe there are around ten or twelve, uh, Thailand, um, travelers. Uh, there was one trip that we had planned that a parent took over. And so some students have moved to that and a parent is leading a trip with, I don't know how many Nishoba students. Um, and there was one parent who was considering leading the, the Thailand trip, just taking it on. They really didn't want to. They were really hoping one of us, uh, would be able to, to take the, a trip and offer something so that, that they would not lose the money, cause it, I think it's a three hundred dollar difference between the cash refund and the, and the voucher for tr, for future travel. Uh, and that's a, that's a big chunk of money. And so they were hoping to be able to try to use it if possible. And, and we certainly know that it's possible that if something were booked, things could change. And I think that has to be one of the things that we look at and that anybody that considers signing up looks at.
Um, when does, when do we as a school district have to, like, say we are interested in, in doing a trip? Like, is now the time to be doing that for next summer or can like, do we need to make a decision now to authorize you to investigate these trips so that there are some options for next summer?
No, we're just, we're just looking, we just, we're trying to keep you informed that the next step for us would be to be reaching out to these companies to see what are the options on the table? What is, what is their recommendation? What, what recommendations are get, they getting from the CDC as a business who does this kind of travel? So that we can bring that information back to you so that then we, that this committee could make a decision on that. Um, but again, no travel planned, nothing out there promising for students until we wanted to bring this to you to say, just like last year, we decided no travel for this current year and that was a very smart decision, given where, where we went. And so here we are a year later, wanting to make sure that we do the right thing and we do it practically. Um, and, you know, we do it with the, with students and health and the safety and the best interest of, of everybody. So, we're not looking to offer any sort of a trips. We're gonna, we're, we wanna do the research and then come back to you with the information that we have to say, these are some things that they are saying are potentially doable for any, any, any sort of travel. And Leah, that would also consider domestic as well.
So the motion to the committee would be, um, to allow, um, through teaching and learning, um, the high school to explore what travel opportunities, um, might be available this year and report back to the committee before any other decisions are made. Is that?
Oh, that's next year.
Yeah, it would be school year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Exactly, yes, next year. But that's the motion to explore what might be available, bring the information back to the committee for further discussion and decision-making.
Perfect.
I don't think we need a motion on that, Madam Chairman.
Yeah.
I don't think you need a motion.
Well, here's my concern. And, and again, I've been on this committee for six years and I've, and again, I hate to disappoint kids, but how many times have we had to play catch-up? Because the policy wasn't followed and plans were made unbeknownst to us and then things have to change and we're having pop-up meetings and, you know, stitching things together. I think that this is an opportunity, not just to, um, explore what the possibilities are, but look at the policy and the protocol and make sure it's clear. Because it is clear in our policy that the school committee has to pre-approve. How many times have things come to us that were already in the works?
And that's why we're here tonight.
Well, yeah, but I, I, again, it's deja vu all over again for me. And it's, it's, I, I'm not blaming anybody. It's just the way that things have happened over the years. And, and I think that we've, we've got, got caught up in, in, in some difficult situations because of that. So it sounds like you are getting, we don't have to make a motion, but you have, um, you need to come back to the school committee with, um, information about what might be available. But i, it can't, you can't hold out any hope to anybody at, at this point. You're just giving information. Mary?
We're not, Kathy, we're not doing that and that is why we're here. To let you, and also to let you know that a trip that this committee approved last year for summer is now canceled. That's the other thing we needed to bring to you tonight to let you know that that Thailand trip is not running and that we will do our research to look at what options might be available and then bring it to you and allow you to then make a motion on what would be next.
I understand that, but I guess what I'm looking for is more managing of the information that goes out. Um, so that, you know, rumors get squashed, anything like that. Because by the time it comes to us, it's too late and we're ruining people's childhoods, so. So I'm not, I, I think you have a plan, but information has to be managed. Yes, Mary?
So, I, I do want to thank, um, Todd and Greg and Lauren for coming to us to, um, prevent just what Kathy was talking about. But, um, in looking at what might be available, I know you know this, but I wanna say this out loud. You're going to companies, EF and other companies who are desperate. I mean, they have not been able to, they have had no business. So it, you know, in terms of selling, and I love the product that they're selling, however, you will be sold. They, they're gonna want you to make commitments. And so I, that, that, um, I hope you hear that loud and clear because Kathy and other people have said it. Um, and Steve talked about, it's one thing to get the research, but then you're gonna have to be very, um, alert and aware as you go into this. And Greg's smiling, cause he knows what I'm talking about. You can't make any, any commitments. This is a great first step and I wish we had a crystal ball so we would know more uh, about what we might be able to do. But if you get information with no strings, no strings attached, bring it back to us and it'll be in the future and we'll have more of a sense of what the climate is in terms of safety for our students. So I, I just wanna thank you for coming. This is, it's not easy. Um, but just beware, beware of these wonderful companies that want to sell you and they want you to take their trips. I know you know it and I don't mean to insult you in any way, just wanna say it out loud.
Okay, thank you. And I also wanna thank Lauren and, and Greg for coming tonight and for presenting us, and Dr. McGuire too. Thank you. I know that you're very involved in this. Um, but I'm just, I'm, I'm erring on the side of extreme caution based on previous experience, uh, experience. So, thank you. Um, okay, the next item on the agenda is the foreign, student foreign exchange program. Is that Todd still?
Yep, and this is, again, this is information only. I'm just informing the committee, just like last year, the district made the decision to not, um, bring, obviously, uh, foreign exchange students in, given the threats with the pandemic, uh, the, uh, and the virus with global travel. Um, again, we've met with several school districts around, uh, the state. There are no school districts that we've currently been working with or communicating with that are supporting foreign exchange. So we will not, we will not be offering the foreign exchange program for next year as well, given the concerns that we just spoke about related to, uh, to travel as well. And so it's just information as it relates to, um, that program, um, at our high school. Um, but it's, that's really just an information-only piece.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Todd?
I just wanna thank Lauren and Greg for jumping on tonight. Much appreciated to you both. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Okay.
So that's it. Kathy, that was it.
All right, Todd, thank you so much. And I'm sorry to be so edgy about this.
That's okay. We, we just, we know where we, we, we know where we've been historically with this, which is why, and Greg and Lauren would say, they, they know, he's told us, do not plan a thing without school committee approval. And we just really, really wanna keep you got, you folks in the loop on that. And, cause it's obviously was a touchy issue last year with the number of people who were planning on traveling and we're not gonna go down that, down that route again. So, thank you everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the school choice vote. So we're gonna start with a motion and then I will open to questions and comments. Ling?
Um, I moved to withdraw from the school choice program for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year due to current enrollment and to be compliant with district class size policies. Desi to be notified of this vote.
Second?
Second.
He seconded. Okay, questions, comments? Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, this question is to the superintendent and I'm looking at the presentation, the slides that you put out. And when I first looked at the number of choice students who were leaving the district, the, the number shocked the senses at three hundred and forty-five. But when I back and looked at how those numbers were broken out, I noticed that you have it broken out into charter school, in-state private school, out-of-district public and vocational, technical, regional high schools. So, looking at these numbers, I, I'm I I'm, correct me if I'm wrong. But if a student, if a child in this district and our and our sending district or our our school district opts to attend. Before we say Minuteman, that that student is not considered a quote unquote choice student, are they?
That's a really good question, you know, in in terms of, because. We 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 have a contract with Minuteman, like we have a an understanding with Minuteman, so because they are. For all intents and purposes, our voc tech school.
Right.
I think that we just put that as, I think that this has typically been the format that have has been used for years. And so it just basically shows students who are not in our our district right now in terms of attending a school. So, you know, I wonder if that may be the school choice. Yeah, that might be a something that we might want to take a look at and just kind of reclassify a little bit, Joseph. That's it, yeah.
I'm I'm okay with it. I I the numbers are fine. I'm just looking at this thing and I'm saying, if you look at the numbers, the way you broke them out, you have seventy two. Out of district public school students. To me, in my reading of the statute, that's the maximum number of choice students we have. I the charter school students. Those who offer in-state private institutions and voc tech, they don't strike me under the statute as being quote unquote, school choice students. So. I I'm just throwing that number out because.
That's a, you know what? No one has ever brought that forward to us. This this has been the the template that you folks have used for a lot of years. But you know what? This is as good a time as any to look and maybe make some changes to it. No, really, Joseph, I I totally agree with you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Other questions or comments, Rich? And then Leah?
Forgive my ignorance and my my new newness on the committee. Could you just define what in-state private means? Is it literal? Is that literal or does it have a specific meaning that I don't appreciate?
No, I think Alita can help me if I'm saying anything. Because I know that you helped to oversee the numbers here. I don't think that there's any special meaning to that at at all, quite honestly.
So if somebody goes to a private institution, it just means they're not, so this is the population of kids that could go to Nishoba. And these are the ones that are not.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Okay. And so the out of district publics means like if his kid went to like Harvard or wherever.
That's exactly right.
Would it would it also mean if like a kid went to Assabat or to? There's a student in Stowe, I think that goes down to a agricultural college. Would they be included in the out of district public?
Yes, I would say yes to that.
Thank you.
Leah?
Thank you. So I have three, three pieces here. First is a question for you, Brooke, and that is. I was looking at the hyperlink that you gave to us where we could compare our district against others on the DESI website. So it did strike me that our our sending numbers are much, much higher than most. Would you say that that's true?
No, I don't think that that's true. Who are you comparing it with?
I was looking at all the towns around us, all of our neighbors.
Okay, I was gonna say, did you pump each one of those in individually?
Yeah, and I am so sorry that I can't, I don't have it at my fingertips right now. I've been trying to find that link that you sent to us, but. I don't know. Do you think that we have, considering we're not allowing anybody in? I was looking at the net number, which was all the way to the side. And for those schools who are sending kids at somewhat of a number that we are. They were also receiving kids. And so the net school choice dollar was like decent. But it seemed to me like we are sending a good number of kids out.
So I would really, and I think this is one of the, and again, I go back to the the. The school committee that I came into. I think that at that point in time that they had also realized that you really kind of have to be cautious with the the. Seeing this as a revenue stream because it really, really isn't. And I think that. I think you really want to be cautious with that and try to compare apples to apples because that just isn't the case at all.
Yeah, and I would never do that. I know that you can't budge on this, but um, I guess that's my next question and and I would like to say upfront that I am. Not wanting to open school choice this year. So to for clarity, guys, our per pupil expenditure is around sixteen thousand dollars. Is that right? And the money that we receive for each school choice child who comes into our district is five thousand still.
That's correct.
So that math feels like a no brainer to me that we can't just get five thousand dollars for a child. We then need to spend sixteen thousand on to educate. And I know that we work in averages, but that doesn't match for me and the state needs to update their five thousand dollar formula. Is that right? To compare those two?
So, yes, I would even take it down a different road, but yes, your your thinking is on point.
And just to clarify for some parents who have emailed to us, when we close down school choice for kids coming into Nishoba. The children who remain in the Nishoba Public Schools who live in our three towns, they can still choice out to any district that accepts it.
That's correct.
They might have to go to either Hudson or Leapfrog, a couple of towns to get to a school choice district. But they can, they can go as long as they have their transportation, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Okay, there's kind of a. Not a fallacy, but there's kind of a, an issue with the, we pay sixteen thousand dollars per or. Our expenditures are sixteen thousand dollars per student and we only get five thousand if someone transfers in. Yeah, on the surface, it looks like that, but. If we take an outside student in and don't have any more expense for that student, in other words. If we don't have to hire another teacher, if we don't have to create another classroom. That five thousand dollars is income to us. Without spending any more money. So it's, it's, you you kind of have to look at it that way. It's until you get so many of those students that you hit a tipping point in some class. Where you have to hire another teacher, that's when the rubber hits the road. I'm not in, I'm not in favor of 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 school choice with students coming in. But I just, that that's, that comparison of sixteen versus five is not really. A true, it's like comparing apples and oranges. That's, that's what I wanted to say, just so everybody understands.
Okay, Amy? And then Mike?
Yeah, forgive me also for. My ignorance around this because this is my first year on the school committee and I'm just trying to understand. More about why the recommendation is to. Opt out of school choice. I can't tell if it's because of financial reasons or if it's enrollment reasons or if there are other considerations. The presentation gives a lot of data on. The numbers of of students who are choicing in and choicing out, but I I. I know there's other factors involved and I just can't get a sense of what's driving our decision to do this. So if you could. Try to educate me, I'd appreciate it. Like, I have seen other schools approach this from an enrollment point of view, you know, like. Where they look at it as on a grade level basis and they'll say this grade will accept.
That's absolutely correct. And and that's what we would do as as well. That Amy, so you're thinking on that is absolutely right. I mean, if Nishoba. If the school committee decided that they wanted to. Move forward with us doing a a school choice in, that's exactly what we would do. We would take a look at the various classes and. See where there are seats available in in essence. And then basically hold a lottery for that and for the students that, you know, that come in. And. So I mean, there's certainly a process to follow. And so the, so your thinking is absolutely right on that. Again, I I think I came in at a time when there was just kind of a bit of a. I want to say a glut because that's not really the the term, but maybe just oversubscribe. Student, number of students in the district. And at that time, and I I hate to speak for the committee at that time because, you know, I'm sure that if you reached out to your past reps. Bolton reps, they could certainly, because I think Bolton, if memory serves me correctly, was the community that I think felt it the most. And so you, it would probably be worth your time to go back and 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 talk to some of your, you know, ex Bolton reps. As to their thinking at that time, and that would probably give you a really good sense. So there was, I think, an oversubscription and and I think at that point in time to our high school was pretty full. At that, you know, and that also had some other, so it was just this whole group of students. And so I think that the thinking at that time. And again, I hate to speak for them, but I'm sure that you could get much clearer from them. I think the thinking was that. Let's just wait until these numbers get down a little bit more where things are more manageable and let's take another look at it at that point in time. So.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Steve for making that clarification. I think that that was a really important point to make about the. The apparent disparity between the sixteen thousand per student and the five thousand dollar income. I appreciate that. And I I just wanted to sort of make a comment that in years past, we've had. Parents that advocated pretty heavily to the school committee on days like this, where every year we have to consider this. We just haven't really gotten that this year. We didn't have anyone come to the hearing. We haven't had citizens' comments tonight. So I think. I think I'd be willing to look differently upon this if there was a more of a community push for it, but it doesn't seem like it's there. So I guess, I guess I just wanted to add that comment.
Thank you. Leah?
Just very quickly, I I do appreciate what Steve was saying about the finances, but to clarify. Sixteen thousand dollars is what we spend on average for each of our students. And if we opened up school choice, it's done on a lottery basis. And there are some children. Who would actually cost much more than sixteen thousand dollars to educate. And so. You know, I I want to put that out there that some kids, it it costs us ninety five thousand dollars a year to educate them. So. And and those students deserve education and I am not disparaging anyone who. You know, the who might require more. That is the job that I've chosen to do myself. So. Not saying that, but what I'm saying is in a year when we are about to cut eleven FTEs out of a budget that's already tight. I am very hesitant to strain our budget any anymore. And so I do think that there are fiscal considerations here. And to Mike's point, if there, if there isn't community pull for this at this moment. And enrollment is not demanding it, then I see no need to do it this year, this coming year.
So I just want to, Amy, this is a a point, I think, that Leah's just made that's that's a critical point. And I would, I would point out that the ninety thousand dollars that she just. Put on the table, I I would tell you, the truth is it's substantially higher than that in some cases. Like multiple times higher than ninety thousand. So Leah's thinking is spot on. In in terms of the fiscal component of of this is just something. And and I agree, and I think Leah, you did a beautiful job of articulating that because I feel that way too. So. You know, that that's just, it's something you just kind of have to keep in the back of your mind. It's not something that drives a discussion, but it's certainly something that you have to keep in the back of your mind.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Brooke? Steve?
Yeah, two things. Number one, that there, as I recall our discussion last year. Number one, once we accept a student, we are required to make, to keep that student. Until they graduate from high school or or beyond.
That's a, that is absolutely correct too.
And 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 one, one incoming student a few years ago is costing us. You said multiples, I'm, it's over three hundred thousand dollars. One student is costing us. So so that's. That side of it. The other side of it basically is the capacity of the buildings. And I think that's the most, the most. Forceful argument, particularly with the high school and the condition that it's in right now and the fact that we're looking to build a new one. And plus the elementary and secondary population that we have. I would think that perhaps the the principals of the elementary and middle schools. Who are here with us tonight could probably give us an idea of what their projected populations look like for next year and. What that means basically, especially with the new conditions, we don't know what these conditions. The three feet and the and the individual desks and all of that are going to be maintained for next year. It's already putting a strain on on some of the physical facilities that we have. And I think that's, that's probably the primary consideration at this point. Money. As a secondary issue, but spacing and COVID treatments and everything else. That would, that we may have to have into at least the first semester of next year or the first half of next year. What, where are, where are we with population on that?
Excuse me, Steve. Do you need that information in order to vote, to make a decision about voting?
No.
Okay, so it would be good to get that information at a future meeting relative to their projected enrollment. But for purposes of making a decision tonight.
I don't need it, no.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Rich?
Just a quick one. I'm looking at the slide that says school choice in. And I noticed Center School wasn't listed there. Is that because we don't have any school choice kids?
I'm just gonna take a look at that sheet.
Yeah, I get it. Number six, slide six.
Pat, do you have that information? Pat, you're muted.
I, I would say that the youngest student that we have in school choice right now, I believe, is in the eighth grade.
Eighth grade. That's exactly right.
That's correct.
Other questions for Brooke?
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions or comments, the motion is to move to withdraw from the school choice program. For the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year due to current enrollment and to be compliant with district class size policy. DESI to be notified of this vote. So if you vote yes, you are voting to withdraw. From the school choice program for this upcoming school year. Okay, so we had Elaine made the original motion and we had a second, so I am going to call the vote. Rich?
Yes. Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, so eleven, two, zero, two, zero. To withdraw from the school choice program for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. So thank you. Brooke, I'm going to turn the next item over to you with regard to the school reopening update.
Great, thank you. So and and I'm actually going to turn this over to Todd, who will help to lead the principals through this. Most, as you can imagine, a lot of our work right now and a lot of our efforts are going into reopening of our buildings. And tonight, our focus really is on our elementary and middle school and primarily as a result of the. The fact that it's also being mandated for for us. But the truth is, we've been talking about this for months now. So I think that we were. We were prepared philosophically, we were prepared to start to make the moves when we saw them starting to come down. So. From the state level. So tonight, I I think the principals would, and I I hate to speak for them. But I think that they would tell you that they feel that their constituents are well apprised right now. They're well informed. I think everybody knows who's coming and going within their buildings. I think, you know, they'll talk, they'll speak to busing, they'll speak to. Probably their lunches, the type of things that they're doing within their lunchtimes. We certainly have got a number of tents and canopies that are being installed across the district to help out with. Outside classrooms or lunchtime or just mask breaks or whatever. So you'll see those popping up. I think the one at Florence Sawyer right now is about as big as a baseball diamond. It's enormous. So we've got a lot of that kind of stuff going on. You know, and like I say, tonight, we're going to focus on the the elementary and middle, but we do want to just touch base at the end about high school. Because there's there's background work being done at the high school too right now. And so you'll see that you've got your high school staff here. Your high school admin is here as well. So we'll, we'll hear from Steve, Janine and John in a few minutes as well. So I I don't think that tonight is going to offer new information for parents. I think it's just, so. I think it's more just to make sure that our school committee knows basically what's happening at the elementary and middle school levels. And especially if you don't have children at those levels. So with that, Todd, I'll turn it over to Dr. McGuire and we can. So with that, Todd, I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. McGuire and uh, we can start to screen share and go through the presentation, which is very brief.
Great. Thank you. Um, so I'm resharing the timelines here that we shared with you folks in the last meeting. If you recall, we posted uh, some timelines of events. When the decision came down to return um, all K through fives uh, as of April fifth, and then show regional school district decided to bring our uh, up through eighth grade back as of April fifth. And the timelines that we put there in terms of the surveys that we put out, the decisions that were made, and then the work that we're obviously um, we're doing as it relates to reviewing the survey data on the numbers of students coming back. I shared that data with you from all of the elementary and middle schools last meeting and we had uh, approximately an eighty-twenty split of eighty percent of students coming back full time and the twenty percent still opting to stay within the remote learning academy or the remote learning models at the elementary schools. Um, we've reviewed the updated bus guidance and the bus planning for students that are coming back. Um, and then in the past several weeks, we've really been in that ongoing phase of taking a look at schedules, taking a look at the facilities, the spacing, preparing buildings, and we've been already involved in the deep cleaning of all of our buildings prior um, to this return. We've also been working with the Remote Learning Academy on any student changes and transfers that might happen, which are very few that are transitioning from one model to another model. Um, as well as working with teaching and learning, working with principals on creating plans, building level plans for those students who might be quarantined, might be out for, you know, more time. Uh, teaching and learning uh, developed a, a plan that we share with principals today, providing them with a variety of resources um, for those kinds of things as well. Um, so I know the principals have been working diligently um, very hard with their buildings and their staffs to get their buildings ready for our return on April fifth, which will be on the um, fifth of April. So uh, principals are going to speak to uh, some specifics around um, their planning. Principal Mark Karen is gonna just start and talk a little bit about the specifics tied to the elementary and middle schools. And then I think he's going to turn it over to Principal Friend to talk about the communication measures that we've taken. In communicating with all of our communities as well as our families. So I'll turn it over to uh, Mr. Mark Karen at this point. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. McGuire. Uh, so on behalf of the KDA eight principals, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share a brief overview update of the reopening information at the K to eight level. So Superintendent Clenchey and Dr. McGuire, as I mentioned, provided us, you know, uh, update bullet points that we want to share with you this evening. You can see on your screen. You know, I think part of this is, you know, acknowledgement of the work of not just teachers, but all the staff that are involved in our school and our district. The patience and flexibility of all of our families um, with this, this change and this update. And certainly, you know, our students, as we begin to work with them over the next couple of weeks on this transition, uh, they're also being great in understanding and, and learning how this impacts them. So, uh, you know, in brief, obviously, we, we are offering two models at this point, the full in-person or the full remote. District wide, uh, our percentages are approximately fifteen percent at the K to five level and twelve percent at the middle level that are still going to participate in the Remote Learning Academy um, with shifting enrollment, you know, in either direction a little bit in every building. So um, currently, uh, our facilities work, you know, along with um, our assistant principals with Rob Frieswick, the head custodians, et cetera. We've been busy working on uh, preparing classrooms, uh, working to keep uh, our lunch spaces at six feet and along with any other mitigation strategies. While the majority of our, our mitigation strategies stay in place, uh, we do have some adjustments to accommodate uh, the changes in enrollment. Uh, and uh, as it was mentioned, we've been lucky enough to uh, secure tents at each site. And at each site, those are being used in different ways based on what the site base needs are uh, that have to do anything from what lunch base is available to what, you know, snack and mask break schedules will look like to PE class. Even it might be impacted by the location of the tent. So that's really at the, the site base level. You know, within the, the food services domain, I think we've all worked with Tom Huel on some level, including the kitchen managers on any sort of reorganizing um, of serving processes or taking a look at uh, schedules to make sure that we can maintain that six foot distant uh, distance at our lunches, uh, which we felt like was critical. And I can speak for myself, early on, I heard feedback from a couple of parents whose kids were worried about that. So the fact that we can maintain that, um, and maintain some regularity around the six foot distance at lunches has been critically important. So other pieces, as you're aware, transportation is a major factor here. We have seen an increase in students wanting to take the bus or, or signing up to take the bus. And Michelle Cody has been nothing but a rock star uh, with processing all of our bus requests and working with D bus to assign uh, seats and to rewrite bus routes as needed. And district wide, we're about sixty percent of our students are taking transportation uh, via bus, uh, which is probably a little bit higher because it doesn't factor in the Remote Learning Academy kids who wouldn't opt for either of those. Um, I know at the center school, I can speak to the fact that, you know, the, the bus increase might present a, a challenge or a change at dismissal process. However, uh, on the other end of it, we don't have an influx of cars that will back up things up into hail or out onto Route one seventeen. So, you know, that's been uh, a, a good piece of the, the changes. So the last piece that I think is a, a concern across the board is what are we going to do if students are quarantined? Um, so that's pretty site-based uh, specific, but we've been working on plans with our staff here. You know, to find ways to either repurpose staff or scheduling or whatever it may be and, and looking at just continuing to brainstorm how we could support students if they do find themselves quarantined. So that's the basic overview for, for K to eight. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Friend, who's just gonna update you on where we're at with communication.
Thank you, Ross. Um, I am going to give everyone an overview of the communication we have been sharing with our families during the preparation and the planning process as Ross has described. Um, so as we have been planning and preparing and measuring and measuring again, we have been working to communicate with our staff and our families on a consistent basis. So the communication and the preparation and planning have been happening uh, in concert. And we've used different mechanisms to this end, as you can see here, from the general to the more specific. Um, and they are as follows. So principals are sending weekly updates to our families to keep them updated about timelines and the planning process in general and basically how things are shaping up. As well, principals are also communicating directly with some families, particularly those families who may have some specific questions about their own student needs. Uh, for examples, parents of students who may be considering or, or, or who have considered transitioning from the Remote Learning Academy model to the full in-person model. And so principals are having specific conversations with those families who may want um, some more specific information and those, that type of communication varies from phone calls to emails to even uh, virtual meetings. In terms of our updated COVID nineteen guidelines and protocols documents that we all prepared and shared with our families at the beginning of the year, those have all needed to be updated. Uh, as Ross had indicated, we are making needed changes to some of our protocols while we're working to keep the majority of our mitigation strategies uh, intact. We have had to adjust some of our protocols. And so what we have done uh, is we, as a principal team, have met with our district nurse leader, leader, uh, Lisa Gilbicki and our director of facilities, Rob Frieswick, who've been hugely supportive. And they've helped us go through our COVID nineteen guidelines and protocols. And then the principals have taken that guidance and tailored it to each of our specific sites, given that we, we all have differing needs. For example, drop off and pickup could look very different from um, school to school. So the principals will be sharing these updated guidelines and protocols with families next week, the week of March twenty-ninth. And then complementing uh, the sharing of the guidelines and protocols, the principals will also be hosting virtual coffees with families next week as well with their assistant principals. And then the intention of these virtual coffees is to provide an overview of any changes that we are making to our protocols and also giving our families time to ask us any questions that may still be lingering. So we're looking forward to those next week. And then some more specific communication to our, to the most important people, those are our students. We are inviting students who are our current remote learners, students who have not yet been in our buildings perhaps to come onsite after school uh, during identified times next week for site visits to take a tour with the principals, assistant principals, get a lay of the land, talk to us. So to, with the goal of us helping them become more acclimated and feel more comfortable about their particular transition. So we're looking forward to that communication with our students next week. We know that communication is really important. It's always important. And it's probably never, never more important than now, especially with uh, all of the seeming unknowns and curves in the road. We're working really hard to communicate with our staff, our families and our students as we make another turn. But the bottom line is, we're all really excited to have all of our students fully in person. Um, and I know I speak on behalf of all of us when I say that, we're really looking forward to April fifth. So I think with that, I think um, Dr. McGuire, are we gonna turn it over to questions? Or I'm not sure if you wanted to speak about the high school, but I'm gonna turn it over to you.
I, I think actually, let's uh, turn it over to questions for the elementary and middle first, and then we'll do the high school completely separately. So because it's, it's in such a different position than our middle and elementary. So so any, any questions of our principals right now with the efforts that they, and, and I just want to say thank you. Todd, Martina, our principals, you, you just, you talk about um, Michelle Cody being a rock star for busing. I think that you are all rock stars here as we, as Laura says, here we go again, we're gonna pivot it again. But we're, we're, we're ready for this. We're excited about this. And I just think that everyone has just done an amazing job to get us here. So with that, any questions?
Um, Sharon?
I don't have a question so much as I have a comment, and that is that um, I wanted to thank the principals for um, the work that they have done and the teachers have done in helping the kids to process this transition. It, it's a big transition at a really strange time for kids to be transitioning. Um, but the work that you've done with them to help them express what they're thinking and what they're feeling and what their thoughts are around it and to understand how this process is happening has been really important and, and tremendously valuable to helping this uh, happen. So I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you've done with the.
Thank you, Sharon. Other questions or comments? Leah?
Just very quickly, I'm sorry if I missed this. Can you detail for parents what the playground will look like? Is that gonna still remain kind of segmented and managed tightly?
I think Ross can answer, Ross can respond to that.
Yes, so that would still be site-based and specific to the schools. However, I think what you're gonna see, and I can speak to center on this, is we're gonna maintain the same sort of mitigation protocols with separation of students and talking about the actual distance between students within their classroom instead of their cohort at this point.
I, I would add to that, that Principal Karen's uh, absolutely correct with regard to recess, and that would be our approach as well with uh, our, our, our classes and, and teachers rotating to classes rather than students moving through hallways and groups.
Thank you. Other questions? Amy and then Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the principals for offering to host a virtual coffee again um, for parents next week. I think it'll really um, be important for parents to have that opportunity to ask questions by before everything changes again. And I thank you for all your work um, getting our kids ready to come back to school full time. Um, I just had a question for about the, the tents and whether you foresee them being I, I know somebody touched on this during the presentation that the, the intended use may change based on location, but I think in my mind, I had pictured them, you know, as an option for lunch, and it sounds like maybe they're gonna be used for more than that. Um, if anybody could offer some more details about the tents.
I, I can speak to that, that um, Principal Mark Karen is right, that it, it may look different from school to school, but the overall general purpose will be a multi-purpose one that you know, Florence Sawyer School, it will certainly take, you know, be a place where we can have lunch, we can have snack breaks if the weather is inclement, but you know, we're bringing students back on April fifth. And you know, the, the weather will be much better than, than it has been this winter. And um, you know, it, it will be a multi-purpose uh, use area. We have a larger tent in front of the Emerson Wing and an equally large tent in the, the Sawyer Wing as well. So uh, outdoor learning spaces and you know, options for band perhaps if it's raining. Um, you know, it'll be a multi-purpose space.
Thanks. Sean, did you have something that you wanted to add?
No.
Okay.
That's, that's what I was gonna say.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, again, thank you for um, our building administrators for sharing out this update. I know parents uh, really appreciate it. I know that personally, my kids are really excited to be back uh, in school full time. Um, if I recall, the slide show that was presented, there are still roughly around fifteen percent of kids that are going to opt to stay remote uh, during this transition. And I just, I, I've had a, a small but um, I guess significant number of communications from parents who um, have concerns about maintaining um, instructional consistency as the majority of kids transition into a full return that um, that their, their teachers, their instructions, to whatever extent is possible, will um, potentially stay uh, the same so that there's continuity there. Is there any sort of update or clarification that you can provide in that realm?
I'm not sure who the best is suited to, to do that. Dr. McGuire, Principal Bates, I, I, I think, I, I think any one of us could. Todd, do you want to start uh, to respond to that? Or maybe one of the principals can chime in on that?
Ask a clarification. I'm, I'm confused. Are you asking about uh, continuity in remote learning? Or continuity in, in, in-person learning? Uh, I'm just, I'm, could you clarify your question?
Right, so, so current remote learners that are choosing to stay remote learners, is there gonna be continuity in, in their teachers? Or is there gonna be sort of this mix-up where things are now gonna be different even though their model stays the same?
Um, so I can, uh, our remote learning uh, isn't changing except for our kindergarten because almost all of them came back.
Yeah.
In that case, uh, a, a couple uh, who have chosen to stay remote will be uh, put into a district-wide kindergarten class, but for the most part, I mean, the schedules, we've uh, all tried to keep our schedules fairly similar and the remote schedule will remain staying at least at MRA. So it's the, the only difference is they're gonna have a smaller class size and they'll need to, you know, recalibrate. Recalibrate their classes just as every class is gonna have to recalibrate and rebuild community and and, but consistency uh, will and should remain the same.
And, and Ross, I think is gonna weigh in too.
Yeah, for the center school, a, all of the, the teaching assignments stay the same. So what, I know that Sean mentioned a district RLA for K. Our kindergarten stays the same for Remote Learning Academy. The only kids will have a change in teacher will be those kids whose families elected to move them between models. So I think that was one of our concerns that I, I share with my colleagues that, you know, what if these numbers move a certain way where we have to relook at class lists? And thankfully, you know, for our students' sake, and certainly our teachers too, because they've been through the wringer this year, uh, that has not changed. So, and, and Sean touched on it, the maintenance of schedules for kids is really important right now to, to bring familiarity and consistency to the change. Because there is a lot changing with, with double. Because there is a lot changing with, with doubling the number of kids in the classroom for the year. I mean, they've had these subsets of school communities within their, their classrooms, so in their cohorts. I, I did encourage our Remote Learning Academy teachers when we met this morning to switch things up. I think they're getting to a point, you know, those students are getting to a point where there's, they've sort of hit a little bit of a plateau as far as, you know, you know, they're, they're feeling the impact of being in a two-dimensional school. So talking with them about switching their schedules up a little bit, even though we want to maintain consistency. And just as Sean mentioned, some of those numbers are down, so that gives them some latitude to do some innovative things and be creative with the remainder of the school year while staying in the same pace with the curriculum scope and sequence as their, their counterparts in, that are in person.
John?
I, I would just add to that, Mike, that that's true for Florence Sawyer School as well. All students will remain with their existing teacher unless they're making the switch from the Remote Learning Academy to an in-person model.
Thank you.
Other questions? Joseph?
Uh, thank you, man. Chairman, I'm just going to add to a, a comment and a request, and I'm going to direct it to Mr. O'Shea. My comment is first of all, as a parent of a RLA student, I just want to compliment Mr. O'Shea and his staff. It was a rough start, but it has been, I have to say, an outstanding year for our son. And I want to compliment you and Ms. Cook and the rest of your staff at, at Mary Robinson for, I think it was an excellent year. My only request is that you have a fifth grade group of students that will still remain, a small number of RLA students, fifth grade, who will be transitioning to the middle school for next year. I hope that as we get towards the end of the school year, you'll keep those students in mind. I know one particular student is very excited about the prospect of the, the changeover. So I, I heard Ms. Friend talk about bringing the kids in, you know, in advance of April 5 to get them acclimated to school. I hope that you'll extend that same invitation to the RLA kids who are transitioning from your school to Ms. Friend's school for next year. And I hope that is the same policy across the district.
It is.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason, for the compliments. I, I appreciate that, and I'll pass that along to Mrs. Cook. You know, for another time, not tonight, but transition, like, once we get kids back in the school, then we can start talking about the fall. And, and coming with that is not just transition to middle school, but transition to high school, transition from preschool to kindergarten. So we we're about a month behind on that. So we've got a lot of work to do once we get the kids in, but all of that is already in the, the back of our brains about, you know, middle school orientation, kindergarten orientation. And also not just fifth grade, but how do we get remote learners, students who are learning remotely back in the springtime to experience the building or at least be in the facilities so that they're comfortable next fall. So those are all, all things after April 5 that will be tackling.
And, and that's why I framed it in the form of a request and not a question. So I appreciate that, Mr. O'Shea. I, I know this is not on your agenda right now, just something for the future. So I'm glad that's, I'm glad that's on your horizon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we can move on to the high school, Brooke?
Right, thanks. And I'm actually going to turn this over to Principal Colleen and, and his, his administrative team to just kind of give a broad, broad stroke overview from my lens, but I'm just going to tee it up, Steve, for half a minute here. From, from our lens, I just want to remind the school committee that right now we are still awaiting guidance from the state. I would point out that we asked the commissioner again yesterday if, if there was an update for our high schools for plans from the state and, and we were reminded, which probably needed that reminding, is that, that the guidance won't be coming out until probably mid-April. And so to, that there was nothing new that the state had to report out to us or to discuss with us yesterday. So we're just hanging tight on, on one level that, that we know that anything that we do right now within NRSD and NRHS is really what we choose to do and not necessarily what the state is doing. So I would really want to be clear that we don't have formal guidance right now from the state. But that isn't, that isn't stopping us from really rich discussions in the background right now, just as we felt very prepared when the middle and elementary school word came down. Because we had had these discussions prior to that guidance coming down. So I feel that we're kind of doing the same thing right now. But with that said, Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you, John and Janine.
Thank you, Brooke. Um, yeah, when, when, when the state came out and told us about us coming back possibly full return, my admin team just went crazy about trying to figure out how we'd make it work. And, and I, and I think we have a pretty good plan in place. We sent out, we sent out a survey last week and we were hopeful on Monday that we would be able to give more information on that. The, the survey is still open. We, we, we're going to close it on Monday. We're just looking for numbers to see. We're going to have for the, um, how many kids we're talking, we're coming back. And it's, it's, it's around 80, 80, 20 at this point. We still have a number of parents that were concerned about not having enough information, and we knew there wasn't enough information, and I just couldn't give them that information at this point.
The 80, 20 is really what we're seeing across the district, not just at the high school. So I don't think any of us are surprised by the high school numbers.
And, and, uh, and, and we worked really hard with, with both my admin team and the, and, uh, the, the union group that, that came in and helped us go through a plan. And, and, uh, Monday, we had a pretty good plan in place and we thought everything was good. And we thought we were going to be able to send out more information, more information on Monday and it kind of, so there was some, some issues there. So, so we're hopeful that tomorrow we'll be able to send out a lot more information to folks and give everybody a lot more information. I, I haven't even talked to my staff yet about it. So I can't really say a whole lot here tonight. But we're almost positive that I'll be able to send stuff out tomorrow afternoon to families and we'll probably give them, that we'll probably keep the, the survey open till Monday of next week. So people can make changes based on our, our, we'll, we'll have much more solid information when we, when I send it out tomorrow. Let's kind of understand at this point.
I think too, you know, I, I, I want to point out that you know, the, the union doesn't necessarily drive our work, but they are very valuable to us. They're very resourceful. And sometimes they think of things that we haven't thought of because they think down a different, a bit of a different road than sometimes we do in, in district administration. So we've had some really rich discussion and I'm very appreciative. So I just want to put that out there publicly too, you know, I think that we all have the same goal. It's how we managed to get to that point. And I would say too, Steve, I mean, I know the background work that you, Janine, John and Matt have been doing, Tanya, it, it's just been incredible. So you know, we'll see, like you say, we, we have a little setback this week, but it wasn't huge. It wasn't an enormous setback. It was a little mini setback. And so we're hoping within the next couple of days to be able to put things out to the community. And as Steve said, just wait and see what else may come through on the, the survey. So John and Janine, I'm not sure if there's anything there that Steve and I have missed that you want to weigh in on?
I don't think so. That's, that's the, from this moment, yeah.
It's, it's, it's really hard because I, because I, I have a lot of parents getting in touch with me. They want more information and I just can't, I can't give them the information until I have the okay to give them the and I apologize to that publicly tonight. I, 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 if I could have, I would have. We just have to kind of wait until we have all our i's, i's dotted and our t's crossed. So, so thank you for your patience.
And Steve, I, I appreciate you saying that, but the, the truth is I feel like that even with the elementary and middle school, like by the time we were ready to go, it was, it's very smooth. And so I think that we just need, we need the patience here for probably another, another couple of days to a week to make sure that the high school, you know, the plan for the high school is going to be very smooth as well. So I think we just, you know, we're close, we're just not over the finish line, but we're very, very close. So the message tonight is just that we're working on this. We hope to have something out to parents in the next couple of days to give them a better idea and the staff. And so there are still processes for us to take that we haven't been able to take just yet, but we're close.
And I just want to point out, it wasn't even a month ago that the high school transitioned to hybrid.
That's exactly right.
The work that went into that and now another transition and to all the principals, just the amount of work across the board with families, with students, communicating with parents, trying to figure out space and classes and all of that. There's no way that any of you were trained to do any of this, but it's just such a strong administrative leadership team across the board and just so appreciative of all your work. And I hope that there is a light at the end of this, this year-long tunnel. And I'm, I'm hoping that everybody has a summer this year. So, um, thank you for all you do. Are there any questions for the high school at this point?
Keep in mind that we may or may not be able to answer.
Amy?
Yeah, I, I just have one question. And, and that's whether you'd be able to just clarify, I know you hit on this a little bit, but could you just clarify that once you've taken the time to work out this plan? And I, I, I'm so glad that you pointed out that we all just need to have a little patience while you take the time to come up with the solutions and make sure it's going to be smooth when it's rolled out. Um, but once that's announced, will parents who have already completed the survey and chosen one option or the other at the high school, they be, have an opportunity to go back and amend?
The, the, the survey is actually still open and, and, um, we, we had planned to keep it open till Thursday because we thought we were going to make an announcement on Monday and that didn't work out. So now that, now that we, I think we have everything in place at this point, and I, I can't say that's for sure, but I, I'm pretty sure we have things in place. Um, I'm hopeful that tomorrow I can talk to my faculty. We will then send stuff out to the parents and we'll keep the survey open until Monday. And if parents wish to change their, change whatever they put in based on the information that we send out, we will go with the, with whatever they put in at the latest, their, their, their newest information. So, and we'll send all that, we'll, we'll explain that all when we send out the information to the parents.
All right. Thank you very much. Other questions? I'm seeing no hands. And so I will once again thank the principals for coming tonight and for, for your continued hard work. I don't know how you do it, but, but thank you. It's, it's just so greatly appreciated by the school committee and I know by our, our, our families and our students. So you're free to leave if you want. You're welcome to stay, but we won't feel bad if you decide to, to move on.
Can I, can I just say that the hybrid stuff is going really great at the high school? It's really great to have kids back in the building. It's so, it's so exciting to say good morning to people in the, in the morning. It's not just the old grouchy teachers all the time.
That's great. Thank you. I know how hard you all put that plan together. Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the school committee chair update, part two. And this is going to be the selection of parent members to the screening committee and then a vote to approve the whole committee. So Mary and I have been working on this through the, the PSC. And, um, so Mary, I don't know if you want to tee this up or how do you want to, how do you want to proceed?
Well, most of, most of this procedure has to do with Kathy. And so she's got the documents. Now, were we able to all meet in person? This would have been done right before your eyes in, in the school committee room at the Emerson School. So we deliberated, how, how could we do this? The drawing would be as visible and transparent as possible. It would have been great to if a number of school committee members could have been together, but we're still all quarantined. So Kathy is going to, uh, she's going to show you. She's, she, she has, and, and we've already shared with all of you, the, the people who, who applied, the parents who applied. And so parents would be able to be considered in our so-called lottery, but it, it is a lottery for as many positions on the screening committee as they have background. And so for, um, parents who have diversity, equity, inclusion background, that's one bucket. And it's going to be a bag and you'll see that in a minute. And then for parents who applied who are parents of students who are receiving special education service, another bucket, bag. And then, um, parents who have elementary and that category is pre-K to, to, well, it's elementary to eight, right? No, it's not. But that elementary and then middle school, another bag and high school, another bag. So we have, as we all voted, five different parent representatives. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathy now and we're going to see.
Before the moment you've all been waiting for, I would like to provide some background information. I will share the screen just so you could see what our process was. Wait, I'm going to un, let me see what I need. Is this it? No. All right. If you would bear with me for.
Yeah, we, we tried to get a television crew to be able to just do all this.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's the pandemic. So
What I'm looking for is the, um, hang on, let me file open. Open recent. Oh, here it is. Is that it? Open file recent. Yes. All right. So this is the first one and I will share it. So we did, oh, let me move my screen here so I can see it. So this was the, the results of the application. Just a few things to point out. We had 21 applicants. This was the responses by town of residents. So pretty, you know, a third, a third, a third, uh, pretty much. And then the grade levels as represented. You had 10 representing the high school, eight or seven for middle school, and then, um, 14 for pre-K. Students receiving special education services, so about 47.6% answered yes. And then folks with training in diversity, equity and inclusion. 61.9% of people said they did have this lived or otherwise training or experience. And so that was one document. The other one is this one. Let me get you guys out of the way. So when we, I, we took the information from that, the applications and we put it on the spreadsheet and we identified all the different buckets or as Mary pointed out, paper bags that people qualified to be entered into. And, um, again, we had a total of 21, but a total of 15 opportunities to, to be chosen. We then created what we call tickets and we color-coded them. And you can see them right here. So again, the 20, um, more than 21 here because people overqualified. So we did a lot of cross-referencing to make sure that everybody got what they would do. And then here is our screening committee so far. You can see that we have the educators are Monica Flores and Maura LePont and then Kristen Hera from the high school. Ross Melkaren will be the principal on the screening committee and Todd will be from the central office. Our school committee members, Mary, Sharon and Rich. And then down low will be the town administrator on the screening committee. And you can see here the five spots that we have for our parents. So now I got to stop the share. There's a little bit of, I, I'll call it choreography, just to make sure that you can see me. Amy, did you have a question?
Yeah, sorry. I, I can reserve it for later, but did that show three school committee members and not four?
Yes, yes. We had originally four and one was unable to make all the times.
Okay, so, so, and we had talked about three or four. And we do, we do have three and we have all three communities. And while, while Kathy gets the next thing up, I just want to recognize Leah and Mike in terms of the superintendent's search website and the application process. And they were, both of them, very, very responsive, helping us out. As well as Alita, who now what we have is, uh, there was a banner that went across the web, the front of the homepage for a while telling people that, you know, click here for the link. that, you know, click here for the link, and now under quick links, um, the very first one, even before alphabetical audit says superintendent search. So there are a number of ways for anybody to find the superintendent's search from the website, from the front page, or if they go on the school committee, but it all, it, all of those links lead them to the same website, um, that Leah designed, and Mike has, um, collaborated uh, on, and it's just, it's, it's really great, it, it makes us proud, yes.
So, um, Alita, if you could unmute so I can talk to you?
Yep.
So, okay, so what I need to know is that the, the, the public can see my screen, even though I've got the gallery view up here? So do we know?
Yeah, that's, that, yep, that's a function that Nikki can take care of, Nikki, I've, I've already discussed it. Nikki's going to make sure that it, that you're on a single view, not a gallery view when it's broadcast.
Okay, so how do I get, I'm going to put my, myself on speaker view so that I can, um, see myself, I see Alita, I don't know why. Um, okay.
You mute and then you won't see me.
All right, that would be good, no, not that I wouldn't see you, but. All right, so now I'm talking and I'm still seeing you. If I go back to gallery. Maybe it's full screen I need, I need to be able to, to see what I'm doing, nope, that ain't it. Um, okay, um, view, speaker, still Alita, I'm seeing.
Kathy, if one of us shares it for you, and you could just direct us.
What do you mean?
Because when you share something-
I can see you, yeah, I, you've got the whole screen now, how do I get the whole screen?
You might, mm, I'm just saying that if I were to share it, for example, or Alita were to share it, you would still be able to see everybody.
I don't need to see everybody, uh, people need to see my hands.
So we can see you, though, right now.
All right, but I need to see what I, all right, so let me do this, if there's a problem, someone call out. Mike, we might need a musical interlude, so you did such a great job with the love boat, that would be swell, but if you have more in your repertoire, um, please feel free, so, let me explain what we did. Um, I'm hoping people can see this, we're going to start with the group for diversity, equity, and inclusion, so this is everybody on that list. And there are a total of thirteen people, and here is the, the bucket labeled as such.
And there's nothing, what? No, I just want to say there's nothing in that bag right now.
Nothing.
Okay, okay.
Nothing up my sleeve. Okay, so now I'm going to make the little ballots, this is where we might need some. I don't know, we should have had like a theme song or something, but Mike did such a nice job. So what I'm going to do is cut these up, and then as I put them in the bag, I am going to read the names of the the folks on this list.
Amy volunteered to sing the Jeopardy song, I believe. Right, Amy?
I do know that one.
Anything to pass the time, I'm, I'm too tired to have anything witty to say.
If we had known, I mean, Amy plays the piano so beautifully.
Me?
We, yes, we could have had Amy play.
We could have had music.
Yeah.
Well, now we know Amy.
Oh, she really plays well.
I, I have no doubt. I'm jealous, okay, so now, I'm going to read the names and put them in the bag, so this is Jackie Reinhardt. In she goes. This is, oh, and Jackie's from Lancaster, this is Allison Warren from Bolton. Kay Allison. Uh, Ilana Gordon Brown from Stowe. Ilana. Scott Powell from Stowe. Erica Elsie from Bolton. Uh, Christine Lorenzo from Stowe. Charlene Cabral from Lancaster. Uh, Kim Early from Lancaster. Chandra Carpenter from Bolton. Jackie Spataro from Stowe. Cage Smith from Stowe. Elizabeth Davis Edwards from Bolton. And Justin Cameron from Bolton, okay. So I'm going to shake them up, and I'm going to mix them up. See, they're all in there. If you had done this a half an hour ago, my husband would be awake and I could have him do this. And the parent who will be representing DEI, or not representing, who will be a member is Jackie Spataro from Stowe, so she's the DEI member, okay. Next up, we have parents of students receiving special education services. Nothing's in the bag. Here is the list, and I will
Eliminate Spataro on that list.
Thank you.
Great point, Steve.
He's got good eyes.
Does.
Okay, Jackie, you go over here, you had your turn, Charlene. Amy, where's the piano, can't you take your laptop over to your piano and flay or something for us?
I do drums.
Maybe.
We've got three more after this one, so you've got time, okay.
If you listen closely, you can hear Elaine singing, if you got pina coladas. She's mouthing it, see, she's pretending she's laughing.
Right now.
All right, so now, this, uh, Lindsay Dida from Stowe. In you go, and Christine Lorenzo from Stowe. And Charlene Cabral from Lancaster. Cage Smith from Stowe. Jackie Reiner from Lancaster. Erica Elsie from Bolton. Samantha, I'm going to say this wrong, Garone from Bolton, Garone. All right, two more, um, Joshua Reiner from, uh, Lancaster, and Scott Powell from Stowe. All right. Pick it up, and there are none, and I took out Jackie, and mix them up. And Lindsay Dida from Stowe. Okay. Moving right along to pre-K. There are fourteen, uh, thirteen, one person, uh, dropped out for, um, this category, so.
Get rid of Dida, you have Dida on there.
And Jackie.
I can't believe you saw that? Wow.
Note the very good cutting skills.
I know.
That Kathy is demonstrating, very sure.
You know what, I'm disappointed.
There are even scissors with, with points, they're not rounded scissors.
They are. I thought you'd be more impressed with the whole color coding thing, but, but I guess not, I guess it, you know, it-
Oh, wait, do you have?
The drawer yesterday.
Your scissors are color-coded?
What? Everything is color-coded. Oh, Mary, I thought we were friends, I don't know.
I just noticed that the scissors were color-coded, the same.
No, no, everything is color-coded, see?
I see it, I like it, I like it, just keep going.
All right, I'm going.
Can, can anybody hear Mike singing Macho Man? Macho, Macho Man.
All right, so Dida, we got them, all right, so here we go with pre-K. So Samantha, uh, Garone from Bolton. Uh, Justin Cameron from Bolton, there you go. Uh, Charlene Cabral from Lancaster. Um, David Hartnagle from Stowe. Jackie Reiner from Lancaster. Christine Lorenzo from Stowe. Erica Elsie from Bolton. Josh Reiner from Lancaster. Ilana Gordon Brown from Stowe.
Is this pre-K up through elementary?
It goes through grade five.
Okay.
Pre-K elementary, Cage Smith from Stowe, and Allison Warren from Bolton. And Christine Lorenzo from Stowe. Okay. So now we are moving on to middle school. There are seven middle school parents who have applied. This one should go faster because there's only seven. I could cut faster too, but.
If only we had somebody to tell us jokes.
Well, if my husband were here.
Rich is dying.
He would be regaling you with all sorts of antics, he had a whole thing planned, but unfortunately it's past his bedtime, so.
I've got one.
Oh, Mike, oh.
What did the zero say to the eight?
This is definitely a mathematician's joke, I-
Nope. What did the zero say to the eight?
Six, seven, eight, seven, eight, nine.
Nice belt.
Not. Okay, thank you, so we have Kathy Romeo from Bolton. Ilana Gordon Brown from Stowe. Samantha Garone from Bolton. Okay. Rachel Viness from Lancaster. Elizabeth Davis Edwards from Bolton. Claudia Dragan from Stowe. And Erica Elsie from Bolton. Okay. I wonder why I shake them, I think it's better to do this. Just swirl them around in there. All right, let's see, who do we have? Elizabeth Davis Edwards from Bolton. Okay, and last, but not least, the high school. Here are the names of the parents, so we've got-
The to- the top two can be discarded.
How do you see this? So we just did Elizabeth, so she is over there, and so Lindsay Dida and Christine Lorenzo have already been selected, so they go over there. So here we go, uh, Kim Early from Lancaster. Rachel Viness from Lancaster. Scott Powell from Stowe. Ilana Gordon Brown from Stowe. Chandra Carpenter from Bolton. Kathy Romeo from Bolton, and Claudia Dragan from Stowe. All right. Scott Powell from Stowe. So we have Jackie Saparo from Stowe for DEI. Lindsay Dida from Stowe from Four Purses, as we call it. Christine Lorenzo from Stowe for, uh, pre-K elementary. Elizabeth Davis Edwards from Bolton for the middle school, and Scott Powell from Stowe for the high school. So that concludes this evening's entertainment, and we will, um, um, get all this information together, and, um, yes, Mike?
I just want to be the first to thank our volunteers for uh, the tremendous commitment that this takes, and I know that it's really valuable work, I know that it's worth it, but I'm still very, very thankful that all of our volunteers are, uh, are willing to commit so much time.
Here, here, no, it is, and, uh, a lot of good, um, um, uh, interest in, in helping us with this process, so.
Kathy, can I ask you one question, clarifying?
Yes.
Because it's been asked to me by several people, is the, is this committee going to be the, the individuals who make the final decision, I know that there's a-
No, excuse me, Mr. Rubinstein, I believe asked me the question, so Todd? Um, no, the school committee makes the final decision.
By this group, I mean, by this group, I mean, this school committee, or will it be the next school committee that may have new members?
The nu- next school committee, because the decision will be made after the term expires for two current members.
So, some, so, so some of the new members will not have been a part of this process?
Right, but I really don't think you need to be a part of this process, the school-
Or this, or even the screening necessarily?
I'm sorry?
Well, what about the screening?
No, if, 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 like, I couldn't, or Elaine couldn't be on the screening committee because we knew we weren't being the committee.
Because you, okay, perfect.
Is that how?
Just a couple of questions about that, so the final, so that it will be that, that new school committee with new members that do the interviews and the final vote, in May?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, there were just a few questions about that, given the timeframe, so thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
And, and that was confirmed by Dorothy Presser, too. Um, that happens, that, that happens, you know, a lot, and so it's whoever, whomever is on the committee at the time, um, votes on the superintendent. And, and, and although we had parents, and, and thank you Kathy for all that you did to have this be transparent, um, and we said what towns they were from, I just want to, um, emphasize that all these parents are, um, they are all, uh, parents in the Neshoba Regional School District. Yes, they come from individual towns, but on the screening committee, people, um, are not representing certain constituencies. They have, um, certain, um, attributes or, or characteristics, or part of their life, depending on whether their, their child, uh, is in, um, you know, elementary, middle, high school. Um, whether their child might be participating, um, in special education, or whether they have the attributes of diversity, inclusion, um, and equity, and have an understanding of that, lived or, or learned. So just so people understand that, um, that we're all in this together as Neshoba Regional School District.
Um, correct, and one of the things that we, uh, is on our agenda to do is to approve membership of the full committee, so as I, um, shared before right now, our, uh, this is the composition of our committee, and so if I can just take a, a minute, if I can do this, hang on. Just to fill them in, then we can take a vote. So it's.
I wrote it down, Kathy, you want me to read them to you?
Well, no, I wanted to have, so people could look at it to vote, I've got them right here.
Alright.
I just got, I'm not set up in my usual. PKE is Christine Lorenzo.
I think two of our members deserve equity in font size.
I'm going to put that to a vote. I don't know what's going on here, let me see, those are big ones, what do we got, what do we got? Font 20, okay. Let's see if we can level the playing field here.
Can I, can I learn you a really easy technique? Click, you already fixed it, okay.
Well, now we're ready to, this is the slate. Ready to entertain a motion to approve the screening committee?
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, because I can't see you guys.
Kathy, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, alright. So this is the screening committee. Let's see, okay, Mike?
Yes, and thank you again.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Me, yes, Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Joseph?
Yes.
Okay, we have approved the committee. And since this is, and it, committee is an advisory to the school committee, much like the building committee is. It makes sense, from my point of view anyway, to have its chair be a member of the school committee. And at this point, I would entertain a motion for chair.
I move that Mary McCarthy be named chair of the selection committee.
Second.
Who seconded, Rich?
I, I did, Joseph, please.
Oh, Joseph, thank you, okay. Any other nominations or questions or comments? Kathy, who was nominated? I'm sorry, what?
Mary, Mary, Dr. McCarthy.
Thank you.
Mike, did you have a something?
Did Dr. McCarthy accept the nomination?
I, I do, I do accept it, in fact, I was going to say that I, I'm, I'm willing, should someone make such a motion. So, but I didn't have to, so, yes, I am, and, and we, we understand that Dorothy Presser will facilitate all the meetings, but we still need to have a, a chairperson, since this is a school committee advisory. So I'm happy to do, if that's the will of the, the committee, I'm definitely, thank you though, Mike.
And just to be clear, that the chair will be the point person with Dorothy Presser. And so that, so there's, there's a clear person who, you know, is, is the interface and also will, it would make sense to then, also as the chair of the PSC, to coordinate the activities with the finalists and, and MASC. So, okay, I'm going, any other comments, Alita?
As a, as an advisory, I think you have to take, for open meeting law, you have to take minutes.
So you. No, because it's an executive session.
Oh, all, everything will be, I think you still have to take minutes for executive sessions.
Well, thanks, Alita, I'll double check that, I don't know, Anne Marie is shaking her head.
My, my, my understanding is that if it's a committee that's advisory and is really doing work that could by law be delegated just to the body, and it's just going to advise, then it's not subject to the open meeting law.
But let me get, I want to, I, I want to get a legal opinion on that.
I think, I think Mike will be here later, right?
Somebody will be here later, a lawyer. Well, we have Joseph, you know, and you. Okay, so we're going to vote on Mary as the chair, I say yes, Amy?
Yes, and thank you, thank you, Mary, and all the volunteers.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, and thank you, Mary.
Mary?
I'll vote for myself, yes.
You go, girl. Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
An enthusiastic yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, good job, everybody, we have a screening committee. We're going to have a brochure, we're, we're rocking and rolling now, okay. So let's see where we're at on our agenda. Looks like we're up to the superintendent's report, if someone would let Brooke know that we're ready.
Yep, I've let her know, but you know what, why don't I start, and we'll start with the teaching and learning update, it's at the bottom, number three.
Sounds good.
So in addition to the work that Teaching and Learning has been doing with the principals in each of the buildings for full return and reopening for April 5th, and also working now with the high school, we've now moved on to looking ahead to the summertime. As we do at the beginning of every year, we offer professional development days, like we did at the beginning of this year for teachers, to help get them ready for the school year and provide a variety of workshops. We're also doing the same for our annual summer academy for teachers, faculty, and staff, which will take place this year from June 23rd to June 25th, the end of the, the tail end of that last week of school, once students are done. We bring the faculty back, those who want to participate in our summer academy, and that will happen again virtually this year. We're in the process of creating and hosting various sessions, particularly tied to the district improvement plan goals around literacy, social emotional learning, as well as social, social justice. And this time also offers opportunities for all of our faculty and staff to work on curriculum projects that they might be working on, as well as attend seminars and workshops with organizations such as the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, as well as Research for Better Teaching, and a variety of organizations that also provide some, some summer work for our teachers. So that's our next big lift in the Teaching and Learning Department.
Okay, thank you, is Brooke back?
I did reach out to her.
She's not in the waiting room, oh, there she is, okay.
Okay, thanks, Lita. Okay, Brooke, you're up. I just did, I just did the Teaching and Learning update, so if you want to go to the MSBA piece.
Yep, that sounds great.
Thanks.
Just a couple of quick things for us, I mean, obviously, you know, when I do the, you know, we collectively do the superintendent's update, we're always looking at the work that we've, you know, really focused on the last two weeks, and I mean, suffice it to say, there's nothing in here about reopening. But you can well imagine the amount of time, effort, meetings, etc., that we are having right now to make sure that reopening goes smoothly. So I didn't put that down there on the superintendent's report, but between that budget and MSBA, it has been an extraordinarily busy two weeks. The MSBA, just so that, and I know that probably Mr. Gleason will probably report out quickly on the school building committee meeting that we just recently had, we are hopeful right now that we are wrapping up the eligibility period. They did send us a note the other day, they had made it an error on some dates, and so we have some work that we need to do quickly within the next couple of days, because there was some, some miscommunication at their end about some dates, and so we're just quickly doing what they're asking us to do and get the work in before the end of this month. It, it's all very doable for us, so I'm not worried about that at all. But we are really proud of the fact that we are very close to wrapping up the eligibility period and being put forward for the potential of a vote from MSBA to, to move the project into the feasibility module, and so that is so exciting. I'm so proud of the work that our team has done and to get us to this, this point. Very proud of the relationship that we have with MSBA, they have been amazing to work with and just, their guidance has just been clear, concise, supportive. It is very resourceful, so we're very, very pleased with how that project is continuing to go. And especially when you consider everything we've been up against with COVID, I was speaking to someone the other day in another district, and they literally shelved their project, their, their MSBA project. They were a little bit further along than we are, and they just said during COVID, we just couldn't do it all, but, but we did. And so I'm very proud of our team that we've managed to keep everything on track and on, on time. The budget, I just want to speak for a moment or two about budget. We, we haven't done anything different at this point in time with regards to the budget. The only thing that we, and so the 11 cuts are still on top at this, at this moment in time. We did get some clear indication the other day with regards to S R 2 funds that are coming through, and we just heard, I think it was just yesterday, Todd, about S R 3, that S R 3, at the commissioner's meeting that you and I were on, that S R 3 is going to come faster than we had anticipated, and so we are delighted with that as well. And I think one of the things we always have to keep in mind, like, I know that Pat's going to do her order for operations tonight, but one of the things we always have to keep in mind is that we still are going to have continued COVID expenses between now and the end of the school year. This has not stopped, I mean, the tents that we're putting up and the canopies that we're putting up around the schools, for example, are not cheap, I mean, this is not even a, a $5,000 or $10,000 dollar deal. These, this is like a $100,000 dollar deal. And so all of these things still continue to impact us as we continue to move forward. Right now, for example, too, we're not sure how the busing is going to work, particularly for bringing the, the high school back on stream at some point in time. And so, you know, that's one of the things that we're looking at, too, what are the, going to be the additional expenses for busing? So we still have a lot of things that are still in the pipeline right now. But the, the budget itself, and there's been no changes to anything other than the fact that we know that S R 2 money is now going to be available to us shortly, and S R 3 is in the pipeline. But right now, that, that doesn't mean any change to our actual budget process. So that's kind of it, I think, for us, and Todd, you did do the teaching and learning already, so any questions, if you want, from our, any of our school committee members?
Questions?
Leah?
So Brooke, can you just one more time tell the community when you will be able to kind of clarify or crystallize how the budget cuts shake out?
Sure, so we're looking, we all, and we've done this regularly every year, as we, we try to do that for the April, the, the April break, so that teachers who have been, you know, put on notice that they won't have a job for next year, can go out and start to, to look in earnest for a new position with another school district during that week, so that, that, leading into that week is really our timeframe. Now, so I know that there had been some talk about the Spanish, and, and that has come up, by the way, the middle school Spanish, that has come up every single year I have been here. I, I haven't brought it up, but it's always been something that's been brought up and put on the table. My concern with doing something with the Spanish, every year, this, again, this comes up is, as soon as we pull away from that, then we're really pulling away philosophically from the middle school notion and the philosophy that we're used, that, that, that we, that drives our scheduling for that. So those are all things that we take a look at when we're looking at making cuts, because we're really, really thoughtful with our cuts, because everything has a domino effect in some form or another. But, you know, this is not something that is just going to be taken care of through natural attrition. Natural attrition is a springboard for us. But that natural attrition generally then starts to put into, into gear bumping rights for the union, etc. So there's a lot of things that we have to think about before we do it, but we try to always aim for that, that week in April is our cutoff time.
Thank you, other questions for Brooke? Amy?
Yeah, you said you've got some clarity on S R 2 funds, do you have a, do you know how much is coming to Neshoba?
Well, we, we, we know how much is coming into the, the pockets, and, and again, I just want to clarify that this is one of the, this is all being different. So there's been no common theme from my perspective, but Pat, correct me if you think I'm speaking inappropriately here. There's been no common theme in how COVID money has been handled between districts and municipalities. So for example, and I think I've shared this with you before, but I think it bears repeating, the CARES money came into our towns. And we made application through the towns, basically, to get, to get reimbursed, and so that's, that's an area where the pocket of money went to the towns. The school district made application, in essence, for reimbursement, and then the money flowed back. The S R 2 is coming into the school district pocket as such. But our towns will be able to capture some of that money to help offset the minimum contribution. So I think that we will see that, you know, and, and that's going to be slightly different for each one of our communities. So it's not like everybody, say, gets $10,000 to put against their minimum contribution. It, it's all based on formulaic processes for each, and we, we don't make that decision as a school district. That's kind of preordained, it's kind of pre, preorganized ahead of time. So Pat has letters that she will be sending out to each one of our communities in the next couple of days to see, to make sure that we're all in sync in each community with the district as to how much money goes to the communities, and then how much remains in the district pocket. Right now, we are, we are anticipating in the neighborhood of about $110,000 for the district. That's what we think we will be left with.
A little bit more.
Pat, did I say anything wrong there, do you want to?
It's a little, it's a little bit more, it's about $50,000 more, that's about $160,000.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get out of, out of 379 and change.
Right. That, that part I remember.
Any other questions for Brooke? Seeing none, let's move on to business manager update.
Hi, good evening, everyone. On the results of, wait a minute, first of all, can you put that up for me, Alita? The February results of operations? There you go. Okay, so the results of operations for February shows little change in regards to anticipated year-end balance. And that's in comparison to January. I want to reiterate what was indicated in prior months, transportation is still a variable. The high school full return will be the final determinant on how much money we have or how much we go over in that area. Our high school lines, I mean, our substitute lines, both daily and long-term, are still considerably higher than they have been in past years. And technology has been an area we've been watching constantly, because we always, we have significant needs there. Grant funding has assisted in stabilizing that portion of the budget at this time. As indicated in the month of January, grant funding will cover most of our remote learning academy expenditures, there are still some salaries that haven't been covered, and again, as Brooke has mentioned, the, this additional funding, hopefully, the S R 3 money will be significant enough to cover the, the balance of those funds that are still lying within our budget.
S R 3, just to remind everyone, too, S R 3, federal money, basically, is, is going, and if memory serves me right, Todd, I believe it's 1.65 billion that's coming into the state for this. And this will be able to be spread over the next year or two, so I think, you know, we, we want to be, you want to be cautious with your expenditure. you want to be cautious with your expenditure of this money. Because I don't know if, what, if anything is behind it. So I think you're going to want to kind of cling to it a little bit just to, you know, it's not something I would encourage that we go out and spend right now because you don't know what you're going to need next year.
Yeah, 1.65 is the correct number.
Yeah, 1.65 billion.
Any questions for Pat on the February results of operations? Leah?
I guess the biggest question mark, you said, Pat, is the high school's full return? Do you envision?
For transportation.
For the transportation component.
So that's, that's really what's driving it. Do you anticipate? I mean, can you guess or would you not even want to do that?
No, I would not want to do that because we're just getting numbers in right now. I mean, we're, we're still even again, like, and I, I know Leah, you know, you know this all too well. You're looking at how many parking spots you've got out in your, your yard versus how many students will have to be riding the bus versus, you know, like the, all those things come into play now. So there's still a lot to, to work through, but I know that Pat, Pat is concerned about how many students are on the bus and the number, like if we have to double up bus runs, for example, that's just, that, that's a perfect example.
That will stop the classes.
That will start to, yeah.
And so that's perhaps where, where we'll need that S R money?
I would guess that you're going to need some S R money for, to help offset that, yes. And don't forget, don't forget too, this S R money, I mean, what you're seeing here is so different than where we were at two to three months ago. Two to three months ago, we were in a very different spot. So we are grateful for the monies that are starting to come in to offset the COVID costs. We're still at a sink for COVID by about half a million dollars, like that, that money hasn't come in. So that S R two and S R three will help to offset that half a million that's still out there in the COVID, COVID land, so to speak.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to electronic signatures on documents. Pat?
Yes, I reached out to the attorney, Mike Macaro. And he told us that yes, we can have electronic signatures and that we will need to have a vote. And I believe that Alita has the votes for tonight. If we decide that we want to do that.
Yeah, the language.
The language for the vote.
Yeah.
A motion for that. So do, Pat, you want to give us any more information? We'll make the motion, second it, and then discuss, ask questions.
Okay, I, you want some background on this as far as from the state? Is that what you mean, like information?
Yeah. To understand what it means.
So what it means is that there, there have been some changes in the laws over the year, over the years, and the district can designate only one signatory so long as they, the designated person makes available to the board a record of such actions. In, in other words, somebody has to sign the records. So there has to be a motion by the school committee that recognizes and accepts the provisions of Mass General Law 11, 110G regarding electronic signatures and that members henceforth execute documents either with electronic signatures or with wet ink signatures, both of which carry the same legal weight and effect.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okay, so Elaine, make the motion, we'll second it, and then we can ask Pat questions.
Okay. I move the school committee hereby recognize and accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 110G regarding electronic signatures and that members henceforth execute documents either with electronic signatures or with wet ink signatures, both of which will carry the same legal weight and effect.
Second? Steve seconded. Questions, comments for Pat? Pat, oh, go ahead, Leah.
I was just going to ask if the motion or if a subsequent motion should identify the who?
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
Okay.
Pat, my question is, now, before, when we were in person, we passed the book around and we all signed it. With this electronic signature, would there be expectation that we all sign electronically or do we designate one person to sign it electronically?
We can designate one person to sign it electronically.
So for the past, well, I guess year, Mike Horace has been signing. So are there any, any guidelines for who is the appropriate person on the school committee to sign or?
No, there are no guidelines.
Okay. Okay, other questions for Pat? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote on allowing electric, the, the warrants to be signed electronically or with ink, I think. Sorry. Whatever, they get signed somewhere. Mike?
Sorry, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Me, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Joseph?
Yes.
Okay, so that's done. Now we have to pick somebody. Is that the next thing, Pat?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we do that? Does someone want to volunteer?
Don't they also have to pick a backup? Yes, I believe you can pick a backup.
Leah, is your hand, because you're going to volunteer?
No. But would it be appropriate for the budget subcommittee chair and then the secretary to be the backup?
I think that would be delightful. I think they are trustworthy and able to work on electronic signatures. Is there any objection to the chair and the secretary? Joseph?
I'm not raising an objection, Madam Chairman, but I, I'm just going to say, and whatever the committee decides to do is fine. That would leave Mr. Rubenstein as the signatory and myself as the alternate. I, I'm just going to say this for purpose of saying it. I, I think that there is a significant importance attended to the execution of the warrants that is somewhat overlooked by most school committees. It's a huge responsibility and technically we're supposed to read all the warrants before we sign them. I, I've always been a big believer that it's, you know, in for penny, in for pound, one for all and all for one. And I, I really think that we should all be signing it if we can do this electronically. But if the will of the committee is that it just be Mr. Rubenstein and myself, that's fine. But I just want to say from my own personal perspective, from a liability standpoint, from a responsibility standpoint, and from a standpoint of being a representative to this committee, I think we all should be signing these warrants.
Is that an option, Pat, that we could all sign it electronically?
You can if you vote it that way.
Well, that would make sense. I mean, to Joseph's point, we only had one person before because we couldn't all be together. So.
Right. It, it's somewhat laborsome, but we can do it.
Okay, Leah?
I would just say two things. Thing one is I don't think that the way we used to do it when we were in person encouraged me to read them. Because it was always so terribly rushed and I don't even think that I knew what I was signing the first time. But the second thing I would ask is, Joe, can you talk a little bit more about, I think you said liability or, I don't know if it was responsibility, it felt more legally to me. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
To be perfectly honest with you, I, I can't. I haven't really researched it in depth, but I do recall being at the, Charting the Course seminar that we took, that when this issue came up, the presenter made it very clear to us that it was really our responsibility and it was our obligation to review these documents in full at the time that we signed them. And let me be fair, let me be honest. This is my 13th year as a school committee member and I know for a fact that the lion's share of school committee members throughout the Commonwealth do not go through those warrants with the particularity that they should. The presenter at the, the Charting the Course seminar did indicate that she did know one or two school committee members retired who would go in and, you know, read them right through from beginning to end. But I, I just feel as a, from more from a, not from so much of a legal standpoint, but from a representative standpoint that I, I always felt that was a little bit unfair to Mr. Horace that he was the sole signatory to these, even though we were dealing with the COVID situation. And I, I just feel that if, if we're, these warrants are to be signed, they should be signed by every member of the committee.
Okay, so the other thing is, we get them, Alita sends us the warrants, so we can see them before, even when we got them in the paper thing, we can read them when she sends them prior to a meeting. So that's always been there and, and that's something a lot of school districts don't do. And it, it's good that we, we do it. Rich?
Which, if I could ask, Pat, have you decided on a vendor yet to sign?
Yes, I believe that was decided at the last meeting.
Well, what was it? Do you remember the vendor?
DocuSign.
It was DocuSign, yeah. So there's a whole workflow for it to go through and get everybody to sign it. It'll bug people with emails. We could put the warrant into the DocuSign things you have to scroll through before you sign. So this has been worked out. So it should be kind of seamless.
So would someone want to make a motion relative to how we should proceed? Should it be everybody on the committee or designation of one or two people, one person in a backup?
I, I have a question, Kathy.
Yep.
One question is if, if we agree to have everybody signing off on this and we're using DocuSign, is it going to, do we anticipate that there might be a problem with getting everybody to sign them every month? You know, like, is that going to be cumbersome? From a document management point of view? Number one. And then the second.
Every two weeks. Every two weeks, right?
Two weeks, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So I, I was sitting here wondering, like, we have 11 people on the committee. Is there a way to share the responsibility, like, not trying to make things more complicated, but like one person do it for a month, then another person do it for a month? Is that harder to maintain or?
I think to Joseph's point, I mean, one of our responsibilities is oversight, development oversight of the budget. It is part of our responsibility. And where, you know, you know, when we be at a meeting and sign it, I think it's, I, I find myself agreeing with Joseph that this is part of our responsibility and responsibility and, and that we should make the effort to do it.
Okay.
Elaine?
Yeah, I agree. And if I remember correctly, the checks can go out as long as a majority of the school committee has signed. So if somebody's on vacation or somebody doesn't get to it, it's not going to hold up the whole process as long as six people on the committee get to it in a timely manner.
Thank you. I think that was one of my concerns. Like if there's one person holding up this process every two weeks and we're saying everybody has to sign it, that's not a good system.
Okay, Mary?
Whoops. What Elaine said was what I was going to say. So, but I do think, and it, it might even be worth it sometime to go through and to have a little bit of a primer on, on how, how to read a warrant, what, you know, because I'm not sure that everybody does understand it too. So that might be something, but it is. Budget is, is ours. And that's why I think that everyone should. But then once we hit six, that they go because what we don't want to do is hold up our, you know, the budget office. I mean, everybody, they work really well and, and you need to pay your bills and we could hold up some of that as well as payroll. We don't want to do any, any of that. So.
Yep, Brooke?
You might want to think about doing this at, at a summer workshop, at your summer workshop, have somebody come in and do a primer for you.
So with regard to our decision tonight, if we, the motion, the second motion is to authorize a single signatory, do we have to amend that motion or change the motion that hasn't been made yet? To say that we all will or is that just our default position? Do we need a new motion, in other words, to say we'll all sign it or we'll all?
I don't know.
Well, was the motion made?
No, no, that's what I'm saying. But the motion is to authorize a single, a signatory and a backup. So what I hear people, and, and that's why I, I want a motion to see where folks stand in terms of it, it being the responsibility of the whole school committee. So we voted to authorize electronic signatures. Do we now need to agree that we're all going to be signatories? Rich?
I would, uh, the attorney could weigh in after this. I just think the current process is that Mike or Leah are doing it. And so we probably need to, although we've authorized that it can be do electronically, that's the method. We do have to change the process, I believe. Right? We have to say, we're not going to do it for a signal, a single signatory anymore. We're going to do it for the whole committee again. I could be wrong.
We need a new motion because didn't we make a motion before to, like in previous meetings to authorize Mike to do it?
Yeah, so we would have to unauthorize Mike and authorize or say it's the responsibility of committee. That's what, that's what Rich is saying. That we already voted to authorize somebody. So we would have to change that. We would have to vote to share the responsibility of signing the warrants electronically. And Joseph?
Madam Chairman, in, in order to move this along, let me just say this. I would move, I would move to rescind the authority granted to Mr. Horace as primary signatory and Ms. Viverito as secondary authority to sign the warrants and further move that the committee in whole be recharged, shall we say, with the responsibility of signing the monthly warrants.
Okay, now you can say that again so I can write it down. Okay, good. Say it again.
I, I would move to rescind the authority granted.
Wait, 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 rescind the authority, okay?
Granted to Mr. Horace as primary signatory.
Did to M H as primary signatory, okay?
And Ms. Viverito as secondary authority or primary, secondary signatory.
As secondary. Sig, yep.
Yeah, to sign the warrants in their sole capacity and to recharge the committee with responsibility of.
Warrants, to sign warrants in, what did you say, sole capacity?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and then, go ahead.
I, I don't think we need to do this, but to recharge the, to recharge responsibility to the entire committee for the execution of the bi-monthly warrants.
Responsibility, all right, I got recharge responsibility. Go ahead.
To the entire committee for the execution of the warrants.
Entire school committee for execution, is that what you said?
Yes, of the warrants.
Of warrants. So here is the motion. Move to rescind the authority granted to Mike Horace as primary signatory and Leah Viverito as secondary signatory to sign warrants in sole capacity. Further move to recharge responsibility to the entire school committee for execution of warrants. Somebody needs to say so moved.
I, I moved it, Madam Chairman.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. That's, that's my motion.
Second, who second?
Second.
Who did it? Okay. All right, Mary, you had your hand up.
Well, I was thinking that, you know, charging the whole committee or, or the majority thereof.
Yeah.
And also, don't we have to talk about electronic, you know?
No, we just voted that.
So that, so that this, this goes along with that, but I just kind of think it should be in there somewhere. Okay. Or the majority thereof. What I'm, what I don't want is that we're waiting for one of 11 or the district is waiting for one of 11 to sign this. So.
I changed it to say, or the majority thereof. So the motion reads, you send the authority granted to Mike Horace's primary signatory and Leah Viverito's secondary signatory capacity. Recharge responsibility to the, the, the entire school committee or a majority thereof for execution of the warrants.
I will so move that again as amended, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, as amended and.
Second.
Rachel's second. Questions, comments? Sharon?
I just have a question. Having never attended a live school committee meeting.
Me neither.
So what you're, I think what you're saying is the process was. Which is, I think what you're saying is, the process was, when you were, when the meetings were held live, that the book was there with the warrants and it was passed around and everybody signed.
Correct.
And presumably, then, that will go back in to be the way things are done if we ever get to having a live meeting again.
Yes, we have, the first motion said that we could execute the documents either with electronic signatures or wet eight signatures. So, either way, that's what the first motion was about.
So, then what we're determining right now is that we could, in the interim, before we have a in-person meeting,
Yep.
it gets sent to us.
Yes.
To be signed electronically.
Yes, a majority of the school committee would have to sign it, yes.
All right, thank you. Sorry for that.
Forgot that you hadn't seen the big blue book. Any other questions or comments?
I was just gonna say, this is actually really easy. I've used DocuSign a lot for multiple signatories.
Very easy.
So, it's super simple. You'll scroll through the document. There'll be a little place where you click to enter your name. And despite Attorney Gleason's abhorrence for the electronic signature and his preference for a wet signature, it is perfectly legal and used commonly.
Thank you. Any other questions? Steve?
Yeah, I would just like to say, for those of you who have never signed the warrants, the number of pages you're going to have to scroll through to get to a signature block. Oh, what is it normally, Pat? 150, 200 pages of checks that have been written and that we have to authorize?
Pat, you're muted.
Yes, I think it is.
So, that's what you have to scroll through, Richard, to do it.
Okay.
I look at them before every meeting, Mr. Rubenstein.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, so, again, the motion is to rescind the authority granted to Michael Horish as primary signatory and Leah Viverito as secondary signatory to sign warrants in sole capacity. Further move to recharge responsibility to the entire school committee or a majority thereof for executing the warrants. So, I vote yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Well, even though I feel like I'm being stripped of my scepter.
Are we lost? Yes. Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Do you want me to still come in tomorrow or Friday this time around, Pat? Or do you think you can get this executed?
Um, I don't think we can get it set up that fast because we have to set it up for every one of you, so.
Okay.
Okay. I'll be in.
Thank you, and thank you, Leah and Mike, for your service. Um.
And Mike.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is subcommittee reports, budget and warrant. I have no reports, but I'm aware that you had a meeting yesterday. Anything to report? Steve, you're muted.
No, nothing significant to report at this time.
Personnel, Mary?
And we've talked mostly about it. We met on March 22nd. Dorothy Presser was there. Anne Marie was there, presented us with a range of superintendent salaries as well as other administrative position range. And we, there was no discussion other than the language that we had in terms of the superintendent for the brochure, the superintendent salary for the brochure. And we'll be meeting on April 5th at 4 o'clock to follow up on looking at those and bringing recommendation to the school committee.
Thank you. Policy?
So, policy is meeting next week. Just a quick primer here. We are gonna be taking up the mantle of the regional agreement, and Mary is gonna help steward the issue over to us. Kathy, I also heard you say earlier tonight that you'd like us to relook at the foreign travel policy and protocol. Do you wanna, do you wanna give me any additional charge there? Or you want us to just take it from there?
You can take it from there. I think it's worth, and I don't want to take up time now, but maybe at the next meeting, we could talk about it, just some of the glitches in the system that have landed at our meetings, and the mess was already made when we had to fix it. And this predates this administration. It's just been, I just think some, I'll call it bad habits, for lack of a better word, that we've tried over the last few years to, like, whack a mole. You fix one, and then, so we'll get to that. But I really think in light of discussions that we can anticipate, that we need to take a look. But I think you could start with Mary, and I'm happy to hop on another policy meeting and work with you guys on this.
Kathy, Kathy, point of order?
Yes.
Madam Chair. When we go over nine, don't we have to authorize that we keep going after nine?
I have no idea. We go over nine so often.
Oh, sorry, I could have sworn that we.
Maybe. We never do. I mean, I'm ready to do it after 11, but if we could keep going.
Yeah, let's keep going.
Communication, do you have anything to report?
No, although I did speak with Chris Haran yesterday or the day before. I'm gonna report that out in our next meeting, which I believe will be Tuesday of next week, and kind of discuss a potential role for him in the upcoming school year.
Thank you. Joseph, building committee?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We met, the building committee met on March 17th. At the meeting, we had guest speaker, Mr. Brian Boyle, who is the member of the advisory committee in, excuse me, in Bolton, as well as a member of the master planning steering committee in Bolton as well on a request for data sharing as this process goes forward. We also introduced the committee to our legal counsel, attorney Peter Mello, who we met at our last committee meeting, from Murphy, Hesse, Tumi and Lehane. We discussed the importance of the upcoming date of April 14th, which is the tentative date on which the MSBA will be formally voting to close out the eligibility period of our project and move us into the all-important feasibility study phase of the project. In regards to this particular matter, with some discussion regarding sub-creation of subcommittees, and we're in the process of perhaps creating a communication, community outreach and timeline subcommittee. Lastly, we are gonna effort, perhaps for our next meeting, possibly to the end of April, that date. The date for the next meeting is still in flux. Perhaps a liaison from the MSBA can come in and further delineate some of the members, the sort of the nuances and intricacies of the timeline. I will just end my report by advising the committee that if the vote on the 14th of April is in our favor, then we're gonna be moving from the, as Mr. Cullinan would say, from the crawling stage to the walking stage. Things are really gonna start to ramp up once we get into that feasibility study phase. And that's where, that's where, that's, things are gonna really begin to happen at that point. So, that's my report, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. And, dear Jay, Elaine?
Yes, we met on the 15th. We are having some great conversations. We actually formed a subgroup to the advisory to research best practices for land acknowledgements. And I won't get into what that is now, but considering that we are coming close to arriving on a new mascot, we think it might be the right time to introduce this concept of land acknowledgements as things are kind of turned over to something new.
Great. Looking forward to hearing about that. Thank you. Okay, the, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Hey Kathy, one quick question for you.
Yes.
Did you want to report out from the audit advisory committee?
We didn't have it listed, but if you have something to report, go ahead.
The main thing to report is, we have met with Pat, which was great. We're gonna be getting an update on last year's audit, and I'm proud to announce that last night, we got our fourth member appointed. So, we are a full committee.
That's super. Thank you so much. Okay, could I have a motion for the consent agenda, Elaine?
Sure, I moved to approve the consent agenda of March 24th, 2021, containing the meeting minutes of March 10th and March 15th, 2021, and the warrants of March 26th, 2021.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leah. Okay, I say yes. Amy?
Uh, yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah. Did I leave somebody out?
Yes.
Oh, who did I leave? Was it Mr. Horish? I am so sorry. I checked you and I asked somebody else.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, items to be considered for next and future agenda. The next meeting is April 7th. Right now, we have a review of the student handbook. Add to the agenda, please. A, we have to approve salary ranges for non-union personnel. PSC will be bringing information forward, and Anne Marie will assist us in that. Brooke, what else do we have?
We'll do, we'll do an update on the high school at that point in time.
Okay. Amy?
I'd like an update on the mascot, please.
Okay, anything else? Okay, if you think of something, send it to me, and Brooke and I will work on it. I'm sure there'll be more than three items on the agenda, just because it's how we roll. All righty then. All right. We will be adjourning the meeting and moving into executive session. Oh, here's the motion right here. Okay, Elaine, would you make the motion, please?
Sure. I moved to go into executive session at 9:39 PM pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares regarding the matter of Maria Del Rosario versus NRSD Regional School District, Docket Number 1885CV01899, and pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Unit A and Unit C. Executive session to include Superintendent Clinchy, Director of Human Resources, Anne Re-Stoica, and District Legal Counsel, Attorney Kevin Freitag, and Attorney Mike Macaro. School committee member Brett Collins will be excused from Session B due to conflict of interest. School committee will adjourn in executive session.
Okay, second?
Second.
Steve seconded. All right, I'll call the roll. Me, yes. Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned and entering into executive session.